You all set, Jack?
Sorry, I was muted, but yes, I am good. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for hitting record.
Sure, no problem.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you, too.
I don't think so. Christian's filling in for Molly tonight, so it's good enough to do that. I think we're set.
Awesome. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Thursday, February 10, 2022, 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. This meeting will take place virtually pursuant to the law signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes an extension until April 1, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of its March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting will also be broadcast on Willingette TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown, and it will be posted within 24 hours on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube channel. I would, if we could, please do roll call attendance tonight. If the committee members could use their full names, and we'll stick with our norm of starting with last name alphabetically.
Julia Bowen here.
Christina Connery here.
Jose Constantine here.
Curtis Elfinbye here.
Carrie Green here.
Ursula Malloy here.
Mila here.
Thank you. Everyone is here tonight. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on our agenda is public comment. I don't have a sheet with any names on it, so if there's anyone out there who would like to make public comment, please raise your hand either physically or virtually. Just a reminder that it's three minutes per speaker. If you could provide your full name, your town, and the agenda item to which you would be speaking. Dr. Matt Smith.
Thank you. My name's Matt Smith. I'm from Williamstown. A parent of students at West and at Mount Greylock, and speaking to Item 10B, which is the fiscal year 2023 budget request. So earlier today, members of the school committee should have received a letter that I sent on behalf of the DEIB Parent and Caregiver Action Network, and I'm going to read that into the record. So, dear members of the MGRSD School Committee, at the February 10, 2022 school committee meeting tonight, we expect Dr. McCandless will present a request for a full-time Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging (DEIB). We are writing to express our strong support for creating and permanently funding this position beginning in the fall of 2022. Over the past 11 months, the school committee has repeatedly voiced support for DEIB initiatives and funded multiple projects, including the Mount Greylock Listening and Learning Project led by Courtney Tunis and ongoing professional development for educators led by Dr. Kiyati Joshi. We appreciate your investment so far, and as the Listening and Learning Project report highlighted, clearly there's still much to do. Creating a dedicated position to lead and sustain this work is the next critical step. While the position description is still evolving, we ask that you encourage district leaders to engage students and each of our school communities to thoughtfully craft a role that centers our most urgent student needs. Although this letter was written by members of the DEIB Parent and Caregiver Action Network, we also plan to share a version of it as a public online petition to allow additional community members to sign on and support. Thank you in advance, and I'll just briefly note that we shared this Monday night. There's already more than 60 signatures, and we plan to continue to collect more as this process continues. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to make public comment at this time? Okay, I see no more hands, so we will move on. Next up on the agenda is the student representative update, and tonight we have Christian Sullivan filling in for Molly.
All right, thank you for having me. Feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions, and I can also answer questions at the end. So a few school updates. Winter sports regular season's almost finishing up, and playoffs will begin, I think, mid to late February. The school musical is scheduled for early March. I think it's March 3, but I'm not positive. The Echo has been releasing multimedia pieces, including their first podcast episode, and the print edition of the Echo will be coming before February break. And then there's two senior class fundraiser coming up. Trivia Night is next Tuesday, and they've been selling carnations for Valentine's Day at school lunches. And then a few student council updates. We just concluded our book drive, and we receive upwards of 1,000 books, which are going to be donated to the Berkshire County Jail and House of Correction, Lewis &amp; House, Families of African Refugees, and likely another shelter just due to the volume of the books received. We're still working on distributing the survey for school start time opinions. We've received a lot of mixed opinions so far, and we're hoping to do a roundtable slash seminar with students so we can kind of get a more intimate sense of student opinions and spread information, more specific aspects of our ideas for pushing back start time. And then we're hoping to host another joint meeting between student council and our class officers to talk about class dues. As we know, that's been, it's been difficult for some of the older classes to collect class dues so far and discuss other important class information and just foster that collaboration between the class officers and student council. That's all I have for now, and if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Christian. Any questions? Carrie?
Where does one access the Echo podcast?
It's on Spotify. I believe it's called Breaking the... Give me one second. I can pull it up. It is called Beyond the Echo Chamber, and if you search that on Spotify, you can find it. The first episode was an interview with Ms. Minari.
Any other questions for Christian? All right, thank you so much, Christian. All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.
Next up on the agenda is our approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the January 13, 2022 minutes?
No.
So, Miller moves. Bowen seconds. Any discussion?
Julia.
I had one question. In the superintendent's report, pretty far down, maybe on page five, I think, it says test and stay will no longer be suspended on 117 as discussed in December. Oh, and will continue for the foreseeable future. Okay, so it's not, sorry, I'm clear now. I just had to say it out loud.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Owen, I.
Connery, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfinbye abstain.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next up on the agenda are principal updates, and tonight we will be hearing from the Williamstown Elementary Principal Cindy Shi.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I feel like there's not enough minutes in this day to kind of talk about all of the busy things we've been doing at Williamstown Elementary School, which I feel like is really exciting. I think we've gone from a year and a half of trying to figure out how we can bring some normal back, and here I am sitting with you in February, and there's so many things to report, which makes me really happy. January and February definitely at our school are really focused on kindness and giving. We participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, and the way that we did that was not only with acts of kindness throughout our building, but we also did something called the Coins for Kindness Challenge, where students and staff brought in loose change. We collected it over the period of a week, and throughout the week, we were able to raise $452 that we donated to our local food pantry, which was pretty amazing for over a week to be able to get that kind of participation and to also be able to really give back, which is the true nature of the Great Kindness Challenge. Much like Christian already spoke about tonight, we also have been participating in the Mount Greylock Student Council Book Drive. Christian mentioned that there's probably over 1,000 books that were collected. I have to give an enormous shout out to Molly Sullivan and Christian and Noel, their mom. They have picked up countless boxes after boxes after boxes at our elementary school of books. I know the Sullivan's Garage right now, even though Christian didn't mention it, is filled with books from the elementary school, so we're excited about the participation, but also know the tremendous next piece of work that happens with Molly and the rest of the student council at Mount Greylock having to sort through these books. But you know, anytime that our kids can come together and be able to participate in something where they're giving back and giving to members of our community is something that, you know, we always want to be supporting. So we're grateful for our students, but also hugely grateful for Molly and her family for definitely schlepping lots of boxes out of our building. And we also are currently participating in a food drive for our local food pantry. Our local food pantry has noted that they're in need of toilet paper and toothbrushes and bars of soap, so we have collection bins that are placed both in the front and back of our building in order for students to bring in and donate materials. Again, I think Corinne de Mayo Wall said, hey, would you be interested in participating? I mentioned it a couple times in morning announcements, and she is coming almost daily to empty those bins, which has been amazing. It's incredible to watch our kids participate in that and knowing that it's going back to their community. That, you know, local food pantry drive will go on for the next couple of weeks, so we're looking forward to continuing to be a partner within that. And big things on the horizon. Our sixth graders are now really well immersed in working on their end-of-the-year musical. Our sixth graders at our school are going to be performing Shrek. They have just finished, you know, doing all the casting and are now actually, you know, working on different acts, working on rehearsals. If you have never seen one of the productions at the elementary school, it's definitely something to see what these children are able to accomplish and their ability to get up, sing, and dance, and be able to perform a show is truly incredible. So we're excited that that is well underway. We're also excited that we have opportunities to work with the community. We have one of our interns who's working with our social adjustment counselor, Krista Sprague, as well as students from Williams College are helping our music teacher, Betsy Reali, to work on various facets of the show. So again, to be able to start to really infuse the community back within those types of activities has been really great for us to see. I think we're going to keep our fingers and toes crossed, you know, that we can get to the end of this school year and be able to really truly perform this show like we're hoping it looks like. So fingers crossed for all of us on that. And big things as far as, again, it feels like a good effort on community partnerships. As always, we work with the Center for Learning and Action through Williams College to, you know, have partnerships within our building. And I have to say, our Williams students are deeply immersed in everything that we're doing, which is incredible. The students are not only classroom helpers, they're recess helpers, they're science fellows. They have really been an incredible addition to this school year to bring back some of the pieces that we really missed out on last year. We have more students than ever. One of my favorite things is, you know, now the students from Williams College are starting to kind of dip their toes into becoming substitutes within the building, which is something pretty new to us. So we're, you know, we're grateful to be able to have them as part of our building and be able to have them work with the children. Our kids have really
Most urgent student needs. Although this letter was written by members of the DEIB Parent and Caregiver Action Network, we also plan to share a version of it as a public online petition to allow additional community members to sign on in support. Thank you in advance, and I'll just briefly note that we shared this Monday night. There's already more than sixty signatures and we plan to continue to collect more as this process continues. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to make public comment at this time? Okay, I see no more hands, so we will move on. Next up on the agenda is the Student Representative Update, and tonight we have Christian Sullivan filling in for Molly.
All right, thank you for having me. Feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions, and I can also answer your questions at the end. So a few school updates. Winter sports regular season is almost finishing up, and playoffs will begin, I think, mid to late February. The school musical is scheduled for early March. I think it's March third, but I'm not positive. The Echo has been releasing multimedia pieces, including their first podcast episode, and the print edition of the Echo will be coming before February break. And then there's two senior class fundraiser coming up. Trivia Night is next Tuesday, and they've been selling carnations for Valentine's Day at school lunches. And then a few student council updates. We just concluded our book drive and we received upwards of a thousand books, which are going to be donated to the Berkshire County Jail and House of Correction, Lewis and House, Families of African Refugees, and likely another shelter just due to the volume of the books received. We're still working on distributing the survey for school start time opinions. We've received a lot of mixed opinions so far, and we're hoping to do a roundtable slash seminar with students so we can kind of get a more intimate sense of student opinions and spread information, more specific aspects of our ideas for pushing back start time. And then we're hoping to host another joint meeting between student council and our class officers to talk about class dues. As we know, that's been, it's been difficult for some of the older classes to collect class dues so far and discuss other important class information and just foster that collaboration between class officers and student council. That's all I have for now, and if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Christian. Any questions? Carrie?
Where does one access the Echo podcast?
It's on Spotify. I believe it's called Breaking the... Give me one second, I can pull it up. It is called Beyond the Echo Chamber, and if you search that on Spotify, you can find it. The first episode was an interview with Ms. Minari.
Any other questions for Christian? All right, thank you so much, Christian.
Thank you for having me.
Next up on the agenda is our approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
No. A so move?
Okay, thank you. Miller moves. Bowen seconds. Any discussion? Julia?
Yeah, I had one question. In the superintendent's report, pretty far down, maybe on page five, I think, that it says test and stay will no longer be suspended on one seventeen as discussed in December. Oh, and will continue for the foreseeable future. Okay, so it's not, sorry, I'm clear now. I just had to say it out loud.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Owen, I.
Connery, I.
Constantine, I.
Elton, by an abstain.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next up on the agenda are principal updates, and tonight we will be hearing from the Williamstown Elementary Principal Cindy Shee.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I feel like there's not enough minutes in this day to kind of talk about all of the busy things we've been doing at Williamstown Elementary School, which I feel like is really exciting. I think we've gone from a year and a half of trying to figure out how we can bring some normal back, and here I am sitting with you in February, and there's so many things to report, which makes me really happy. January and February definitely at our school are really focused on kindness and giving. We participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, and the way that we did that was not only with acts of kindness throughout our building, but we also did something called the Coins for Kindness Challenge, where students and staff brought in loose change. We collected it over the period of a week, and throughout the week we were able to raise four hundred and fifty-two dollars that we donated to our local food pantry, which was pretty amazing for over a week to be able to get that kind of participation and to also be able to really give back, which is the true nature of the Great Kindness Challenge. Much like Christian already spoke about tonight, we also have been participating in the Mount Greylock Student Council Book Drive. Christian mentioned that there's probably over a thousand books that were collected. I have to give an enormous shout out to Molly Sullivan and Christian and Noel, their mom. They have picked up countless boxes after boxes after boxes at our elementary school of books. I know the Sullivan's Garage right now, even though Christian didn't mention it, is filled with books from the elementary school. So we're excited about the participation, but also know the tremendous next piece of work that happens with Molly and the rest of the student council at Mount Greylock having to sort through these books. But you know, anytime that our kids can come together and be able to participate in something where they're giving back and giving to members of our community is something that, you know, we always want to be supporting. So we're grateful for our students, but also hugely grateful for Molly and her family for definitely schlepping lots of boxes out of our building. And we also are currently participating in a food drive for our local food pantry. Our local food pantry has noted that they're in need of toilet paper and toothbrushes and bars of soap. So we have collection bins that are placed both in the front and back of our building in order for students to bring in and donate materials. Again, I think Corinne de Mayo Wall said, hey, would you be interested in participating? I mentioned it a couple of times in morning announcements, and she is coming almost daily to empty those bins, which has been amazing. It's incredible to watch our kids participate in that and knowing that it's going back to their community. And that, you know, local food pantry drive will go on for the next couple of weeks, so we're looking forward to continuing to be a partner within that. And big things on the horizon, our sixth graders are now really well immersed in working on their end of the year musical. Our sixth graders at our school are going to be performing Shrek. They have just finished, you know, doing all the casting and are now actually, you know, working on different acts, working on rehearsals. If you have never seen one of the productions at the elementary school, it's definitely something to see what these children are able to accomplish and their ability to get up, sing and dance and be able to perform a show is truly incredible. So we're excited that that is well underway. We're also excited that we have opportunities to work with the community. We have one of our interns who's working with our social adjustment counselor, Krista Sprague, as well as students from Williams College are helping our music teacher, Betsy Reali, to work on various facets of the show. So again, to be able to start to really infuse the community back within those types of activities has been really great for us to see. I think we're gonna keep our fingers and toes crossed, you know, that we can get to the end of this school year and be able to really truly perform this show like we're hoping it looks like. So fingers crossed for all of us on that. And big things as far as, again, it feels like a good effort on community partnerships. As always, we work with the Center for Learning and Action through Williams College to, you know, have partnerships within our building. And I have to say, our Williams students are deeply immersed in everything that we're doing, which is incredible. The students are not only classroom helpers, they're recess helpers, they're science fellows. They have really been an incredible addition to this school year to bring back some of the pieces that we really missed out on last year. We have more students than ever. One of my favorite things is, you know, now the students from Williams College are starting to kind of dip their toes into becoming substitutes within the building, which is something pretty new to us. So we're, you know, we're grateful to be able to have them as part of our building and be able to have them work with the children. Our kids have really missed that connection. Going along with that as well, we were able to participate in adventures and learning. So we had a number of college students and a number of people, you know, working with our kids after school, everything from cooking to ultimate frisbee down the hallways. You know, egg drops. It was pretty exciting. Kids were really excited to do really fun things after hours in the school. And I'm grateful to both Katie Agostini and Geraldine Shen, who were able to coordinate and make sure all of these programs were able to happen in the building. BioIs also came to our third graders at Williamstown Elementary School, which is another way that Williams College was able to come in and the students worked with our kids for about a week. They were able to learn about genetics, really able to have a truly collaborative learning experience, which is always one of our favorites that we missed out on last year. So again, you know, it's feeling a little bit more normal, which is always good to see. The big exciting thing for today, we brought back our first Zoom around the world. We were able to work with Lansbury Elementary School and all of our students were able to join and listen to a presentation from a college student about Kazakhstan. And not only was the presentation fascinating, just they always are really, the presentations themselves are great, but the student presenter was really willing to stay on for many, many minutes to answer student questions. The chat box continued to fill with anything from, you know, what's your favorite song? Can you count to twenty in your language? How many languages do you speak? And I know Nolan and I were both excited that, you know, we've done a couple of these. We're always impressed with students' willingness to get on and talk to a group of little kids about their culture. But what was pretty fun about this one was the range of questions and the interest that students had was something that we've seen, but not to this degree. We actually got to the end of it, actually had to tell the kids, you know, the college student had to go, the college student couldn't stay on all day. But it's always exciting to see, even though they're through a screen, the kids are still learning, the kids are still participating, and they're still learning about someone else's culture. So we're grateful to continue that opportunity. And, you know, as I know Nolan and I have both talked about that ability to try and, you know, get our two schools together and get our students together, something that's really important to the two of us. And albeit virtually, it was still an incredible opportunity for us to virtually see each other and virtually, you know, be participating in the same activity. And it's something, you know, whether that moves to in person or stays virtually, that notion of wanting our schools to participate in things together and form relationships far before kids ever get together at the high school is really something that's important and something that we want to be continuing to do. Other big things, this week we announced our Renzi Award winners. So Helen Renzi was a longtime Williamstown teacher and administrator. She believed ultimately that the most important thing that you could be is a good person. With our fifth and sixth grade teachers, as well as with our specialist teachers, they got together to determine which of our sixth grade students best exemplify those qualities of being a good citizen and the qualities that are really important to us at West, working on kindness, enthusiasm, and helping others. This year's Renzi Award recipients were Parker Langenbach, Roger Houdin, Jackson Sheehy, and Fiona Whaley. So we're incredibly proud of these kids. The kids will have an opportunity later this week to work with our school librarian and be able to choose a book that will stay in Williamstown Elementary School Library with their name inside of it in a special Helen Renzi collection. Those students will also be receiving a book of their choice, and there will also be a moment later in the year at their sixth grade graduation where we will, again, you know, kind of take a moment to recognize their accomplishment. As always, there's so many kids that are good citizens in our school. We're really proud of what our kids are doing, and it's just another opportunity to take a moment and celebrate the goodness that's happening within the building. A look ahead, we have a lot of things it feels like we're looking ahead to, which is great. First, we have tomorrow, we will be distributing the first round of our student at-home COVID tests. So families that were able to opt in to receive those tests, those tests will be coming home with students tomorrow afternoon. And we will continue, you know, to provide that opt-in sheet, both paper versions and online for families that would like to continue to opt in. I think it's important to remember, if families haven't done it, there's still time, continue to do it. We'll be updating our list constantly to make sure that we have access to those tests to give to our families. And other big things, our preschool screening is set for March seventeenth and March eighteenth. Our preschool teachers and speech and language pathologists are working together to be able to meet with students well before next school year. If you have any interest in enrolling a preschool student and getting the screening done, you can call our front office and they will go ahead and set you up with an appointment. Tentatively, we are going to be doing our side-by-side lottery April fifteenth. So a lot on the horizon. Lastly, big things were, as always, preparing for MCAS, so that's all the buzz in the building, trying to determine what the calendar is going to be preparing our students. And our most, you know, another exciting end of the year activity, we are looking to kind of revamp our field day. Our PE teacher, Ben Berdick, has really come up with a kind of an amazing proposal to try and bring back field day like it used to be where it was a full-day activity, but one of the goals being to infuse members of our community within that activity. So he and Travis and I have been meeting and we're trying to determine what field day will look like, and hopefully it will be a really good way for us to celebrate the end of this school year. We're looking forward to his ideas. We're also just looking forward to make it a great day that's a celebration for our kids have had a rough two years, and this is something that we're hoping is going to be an amazing end to what is, again, been another unusual year. Definitely a better year, but definitely still an unusual year.
Any questions? Jose?
Thank you, Cindy. That was a whirlwind tour of all the amazing activities happening in West, and it's very exciting to hear. I was curious about a few, well, I was wondering if you could give us an update on the current school nurse situation and whether, well, you know, where we are in that process.
Right, so right now we currently have a full-time substitute nurse while we can, you know, basically are doing the certs to have a full-time nurse. And we're accepting applications, are beginning to interview people, and are hopeful that we will be able to find the right fit for the school.
Any other questions? Ursula?
You mentioned the side-by-side lottery. What is that?
The side-by-side is our preschool.
Oh, so there's a lottery to...
Right, so there's a lottery. They do a screening in March, and then people are allowed to sign up for the lottery, and it's a true lottery system to fill the spots in both our AM and PM section, and then we also have a full-day section as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Okay, next up on our agenda is the Finance Subcommittee Report. So I'm going to turn it over to the Subcommittee Chair, Carrie Green.
Thanks, Christina. Okay, so about a month ago at the January thirteenth school committee meeting, we as a committee voted to move forward with the process of bidding out a project that would include a synthetic track with a natural grass field. And the natural grass field being a modern field, we talked about some of what that would entail and how that would be better than the grass fields that we currently have at the school. We continued that discussion a little bit at our January twenty-seventh Finance Committee meeting, specifically focusing on the issue of playability. What was going to be different about this new field? This modern field, this field that would be better designed, better maintained? What would be, what would make it more playable, essentially? And part of what we talked about was the fact that we would be using, you know, a special covering over the field in the winter that we wouldn't be using it over the winter, that it would be protected, that it would grow, you know, the grass would be nurtured and grow more quickly. We would gain two weeks in the spring from what we have currently been experiencing. We looked at the playability calendar, which is something that Joe and Lindsay put together, I believe, looking specifically at where are the challenges? And clearly, as we've talked about in the past, the challenges are in the shoulder season. So this was going to reduce the challenging shoulder, spring shoulder season by about half, we think. That is the projection. So that's the message that we want to send out, is that by using the, all of the technology for grass fields that is available to us, we hope to really reduce the time that we are not able to use that field in the spring, or rather, increase the time that we are able to use it and get back, get on, get their kids on the field two weeks earlier than we can currently. The fall shoulder season we looked at would be about the same, that whenever the ground freezes, it would not be, would not be a good time to be playing on it because you would be damaging the grass, and we're going to want to cover it at that point anyway. We talked about the fact that the summer, we're not, we would not be saying, this is certainly preliminary, very preliminary discussion, but I think there was some sense from the previous school committee discussion that we were saying that we weren't going to use the field in the summer, and we wouldn't be recommending that particularly. But we are thinking of this as a game field, right? So we would probably not want to have it open to the public all the time. We might want to save it for special summer tournaments in our community. The track is something that we would want to have available to the community on a regular basis. So we'll just have to figure those things out, but we don't want to give the impression that we're building something that we will then close off to the public, because that's not the intent. After the thirteenth, or sorry, after that discussion on the twenty-seventh, we met again this afternoon. And on the agenda, we had an item which was to talk about the Mount Greylock Outdoor Campus Planning Timeline. And really, that's a conversation that we are eager to get to, you know, in terms of what is the timeline of this project? What is the timeline of repairing and renewing the other fields on our campus? What other projects are we looking at for our campus? But we're going to hold off on that conversation until we're done with the budget. So we'll look to get back to that conversation in late March or early April. We did talk about the the item that is further down on our agenda tonight, which is the procedure, the process for putting out the bid for the landscape architect. So I won't dwell on that now, but I will say that we also did talk about the FY twenty-three preliminary budget and went into more detail than what you'll hear tonight about some of the staffing requests, which actually we've all heard about the staffing requests. And we did talk about some of the coding changes that Joe and his team have been working on. And we are looking forward to more detail as we get through the budget season. Right now, the revenues from the state look positive, and I'm sure Joe is going to talk about that with the full committee, because that's some really good news to look forward to. So I'll leave it there unless Steve or Steve, did you want to add something? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to add one very small thing, because you hit almost everything, is one of the concerns many people in the community have had is playable hours, and you've talked a lot about that right now. And I believe the number was about six hundred hours a year for the natural field. And when we added up all the different sports, we were getting around two hundred and forty. So you're well below that, so that does leave the ability for some summer play. And then at some point, I believe that we will be providing to the public a detailed list of, you know, you know, all of this stuff in terms of hours and playability and whatnot, so that people can see, you know, does this meet the demands?
Thank you. Questions from the committee? All right. Back to you, Christina.
Thank you, Carrie. Next up on the agenda is the Policy Subcommittee Report, and so I'm going to turn it over to that Subcommittee's Chair, Jose Constantine.
Thank you, Christina. I'm convinced that you put us after the Finance Subcommittee, just to make me look bad after following Carrie, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best. Now, the Policy Subcommittee met and discussed or attempted, or started the process of thinking about what school committee goals could be, might be, and should be. And in doing so, we developed, you know, through our conversations, some thoughts around recommendations to the full committee to consider. Those considerations can either happen through dialogue discussion now. We are open to, and I believe motions to adopt recommendations are possible. You know, certainly in the least or at the least, you know, that any feedback that we receive, if the full committee would like the Policy Subcommittee to further develop some of these ideas, we're welcome to do so in following and soon-to-occur policy Subcommittee meetings. The recommendations kind of center around, or at least follow on from feedback that we provided ourselves during our school committee retreat. And I believe that the Policy Subcommittee, we were unanimous in appreciating the self-evaluation process that took place to prepare the committee for the retreat and thought that that would be something that we should do on a regular basis. So I'll just, this is part of the meeting packet. I can either share my screen or just read these recommendations from the notes that I have at my disposal. I think might be the easiest thing to do, just to read them directly. So there are four recommendations that the Policy Subcommittee are making to the full committee, and I think what I'll do is read each one aloud, discussion after each one. Well, maybe I'll read all four, and then we'll see where the kind of feedback and discussion that we get.
You can share if you want to share.
Oh, okay.
You're set up to do so, or I'm happy to.
Yeah, all right. Easy, easy. Thank you, Jake.
Yep.
Any fears that you have, superpowers are proven true. Here we go. So, all right, so this is the the, thanks to Julia for crafting this list. These are the four recommendations that the Policy Subcommittee have articulated regarding, you know, efforts to establish or to help facilitate a process of identifying school committee goals. So the first is to establish a process by which we measure and hold ourselves accountable to being a supportive school committee for the district. To accomplish this, steps we could take are to agree on a set of norms for how we interact with each other, to develop a school committee self-evaluation tool, and to develop a mechanism by which we hold ourselves accountable, not just, you know, at the end of an academic year or the calendar year, but throughout the year. The second recommendation is to redefine the Policy Subcommittee to be the Policy and Governance Subcommittee. The reason for this recommendation is that we were trying to imagine a mechanism by which this Subcommittee could facilitate, you know, the development and of school committee goals, for instance. And if we were to take on that responsibility, I think it broadens effectively the definition and remit of this Subcommittee. So we thought that an edit or an amendment of our Subcommittee title would be appropriate. Doing so would involve not just changing the title of the Subcommittee, but it would also involve rewriting the Subcommittee description to include effectively a self-governance function, not over the district, but over the school committee. The third recommendation is that members of the Policy and Governance Subcommittee, if it does become renamed that... The third recommendation is that members of the policy and governance subcommittee, if it does become renamed that. As well as any others on the full committee, participate in district, district governance training. That the M A S C offers throughout the year. And then this whoever, whatever, whomever attends these workshops to bring back salient information to the school committee. And the fourth is to plan and execute a follow up workshop with Abby. Who I think at the retreats, I think we all appreciated her careful, thoughtful and and patient. Guidance throughout the discussions that we all participated in during during the retreat. So these are the four recommendations that we offer to the full committee for consideration. And we welcome any, any feedback or discussion. The silence can mean many things.
Can you see Julia, Jose?
I did not apologies. I didn't, I can't see you, Julia, but Julia.
I I was just going to add one thing from a timeline perspective that we discussed and that these goals would be for. Until November twenty twenty two. So our goal cycle, at least our our. Proposal is that our goal cycle match more the election cycle than it does the school year or the. Other cycles that are already present.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. I think, you know, these recommendations that we've put forth to the full committee. Are, you know, fairly general and they're they're clear like mechanisms and decisions regarding how all of this. Gets rolled out and unfolded. And I think, you know, those discussions. You know, can either take place during a full committee meeting, or if the full committee warrants it or 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 sees the need for this, the. Policy or policy and governance subcommittee could could take on that responsibility. But we would love your feedback. The silence from all of you can mean many things. I will look to Carrie. Because that silence could mean that these are just so incredibly thoughtful. Obvious.
So the only thing I was going to add, Jose, is that. We, you know, in the past, the the goals of the school committee have. Been district goals, right? So things like. Build a new school or regionalize or, you know, big, big, big goals. These are more internal goals, right? So it. It follows on the work that we did with Abby, which is, you know, the better we function, the better we can support. The goals of the district and we all have the district improvement plan. We've seen the school improvement plans. We've seen the superintendent's goals. So part of our discussion was that we don't need to create another set of goals. For the district that that's being done by others. What we need to do is create goals that will. Enable us to function at our best and be able to support the work of the district.
Yeah, Christina.
I have a question about number four. And maybe Carrie has this question too, but. Does number four mean the policy and governance subcommittee will arrange for the workshop? And work with Abby.
Now, that is, that is a great question. I, you know, and my two. Much more competent, capable and wonderful colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our. My memory of this is that this would be through the chair and the, you know, and the superintendent. To arrange and and start preparing for that. Follow up workshop. And the policy subcommittee can support in any way that the chair and superintendent sees fit.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just enjoyed our time with Abby that we wanted to do it all over again. Maybe we enjoyed our time with each other as well. I could be stretching the truth there, but I think I think it's true. Stephen, you unmuted. I don't know if you you have something to say. Yeah, Stephen. Yeah, sorry, Stephen. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm. I have, I have a bad net connection. I'm going to try to do it with the video on. I was debating whether or not to say this. So as you were talking about aligning things to the. Election calendar rather than the school year calendar. Are you thinking of aligning it to a one year or two year cycle? Because we have elections every two years, although I would be hard pressed to remember the last time when we didn't have somebody who was serving. Because someone stuck down and appointed interim. But are you thinking of a two year cycle or one year cycle for things?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And I think, I think to be honest, you know, it's probably a topic that. You know, we need to discuss further in need to, you know, if the full committee would like the policy subcommittee to. You know, start to develop a strategy and a mechanism for accomplishing these recommendations. We would have to report back to the full committee with. With ideas or proposals for for how this could be done to get feedback from you all about about what's most appropriate. That's sort of a non-answer Stephen, but hopefully it's an honest one, I think.
I thought it was a good answer.
I think Christina, we could probably use your feedback in terms of steps forward regarding these recommendations.
So. We could. If no one has any giant changes behind it, we could. Make a motion to approve these so that you could move forward, I think, especially with this. The idea of the policy and governance subcommittee and any description that would be included within that committee. Because that would be, that would be a significant change to the description. I.
The goals for twenty twenty two, the school committee goals as presented.
Okay, Carrie moves. Do I have a second?
Sorry, it was muted.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
Christina, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I just wanted to say I agree with what Carrie mentioned and Jose in that. It feels like having school committee goals that are separate from the school district goals would be really helpful for us as a. High performing team, right? So I I support it. I like it.
Thank you, Ursula. Any other discussion? Steve?
Yes, so I I think these sound very good. The only question I have is, do we want to? Formally approve this at the next meeting to give the public a chance to provide some input?
Julia, do you have thoughts on that?
You, is there anything time sensitive or? It's internal, so it's not quite the same as other things. That's why I'm finding either way. I just thought I would bring it up.
I think because it's internal. We can, we can vote on it today. That was sort of my thought behind it.
So. The the one part of the discussion that if we're going to approve these goals, I think we do need to say by when they will be achieved. And that the question Steve asked earlier, is this a one year or two year cycle? And I, I think. When our committee or subcommittee was talking about this, we were talking about this being in twenty twenty two, like this being. Not a two year cycle, this round anyway, these goals not being a two year cycle. And I just want to name that because I don't. Want to set goals and not have a deadline for when we think we're going to try to achieve them.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great point, Julia. Sorry for interrupting Christina or interjecting. That's a great point. I think we. Both Julie and I particularly. Have sleepless nights at the thought of five new faces. I'm sure they will all be wonderful if that were the case, but. You know, I think we wanted to achieve these goals prior to a potentially new. Iteration of the of the school committee being being online. So I think at least for this particular set, you know, we would, we would. Ask that the full committee gauge progress on these goals and recommendations. And we, we, the policy and governance, if it's going to become that, subcommittee can can. Report back and certainly will during this process be in consultation with the full committee about about progress on these on these goals. That is a great point. Thank you, Julia.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Open by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Bill up, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Jose, do you have anything else to report?
My colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe that's all we have to share with you all today. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Jose. You did a great job.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the business administrator report. So I will turn it over to our business administrator, Joe Bergeron.
Well, thank you. It's good to see you all. I was actually thinking that we're looking more and more like the Brady Bunch as as every month goes by right now, which might be a good thing or a bad thing. I'm not sure. So business administrator report. Jake, do we want to touch the tuition rates? Item or should we hold off?
I I think we can talk about them very briefly. We are. You know, as you all know, we have a tuition agreement with New Ashford and Hancock for. Both the use of Lanesboro, you know, sending students to Lanesboro Elementary School and sending students to Mount Greylock Regional School. The way we're preparing our budgets, the way that Ms. Dr. Hancock, Dr. Phillips. The Hancock and New Ashford superintendent is preparing their budget is with a three percent increase over the the FY twenty two. Number, we are though working to, Joe and I are meeting with Rebecca next week, I believe, or the or the week after break. And then we're going to try to pull together a meeting of the three chairs. Just to give the the tuition agreements a. A little fuller of a look moving forward. The way they're structured now, they kind of automatically renew. At a certain point in the year and they are, they are, the increase from year to year is based largely on data. That we're not sure we ever have in a timely enough matter to actually be useful for budget considerations. So this year we're looking at a, at a, just a a flat three percent increase. And then we're continuing to work on this. Thanks, Joe.
All right. Any questions on the the tuition rates topic?
Just a quick question, Jake, you mentioned Lanesboro and Greylock. So does Williamstown not participate in school choice at all?
It's, it's, this is a, that's a great question. This is totally separate from a school choice issue, like a tuition agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Guarantee spots in those two schools and Williamstown is not a part. Williamstown Elementary is not a part of those tuition agreements.
You're right, understood. I, when you, when I saw tuition, I was thinking school choice. Okay, understood. Got it.
All right. Any other tuition questions at the moment? Okay. Next up, FY twenty three budget development update. As Carrie alluded to during the, during the finance subcommittee meeting, we started going into. A new structure, new line structure for the budget for FY twenty three. That will make it overall easier to read and I think a more productive time for all involved. Right now, we continue focused within the district office on what the staff requests from the buildings. Mean in terms of the bottom line. And and that's a topic that I think Jake will touch upon with, with more commentary and and color later tonight. But for the moment. What I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen. And. Going to ask you, as I failed to at the beginning of the finance committee meeting, is this large enough for everybody to see? Yes, okay. So the the cumulative requests from the schools and and the district. Lanesboro Elementary School has been looking for an additional classroom teacher. Moving an occupational therapist to full time from part time. Mount Greylock has been looking for a one point O math interventionist, a one point O, one point O meaning F T like portion of a full time position. Reading interventionist, Williamstown Elementary School, a social worker, a reading specialist, academic support paraprofessional. Shift from point five to one point O for a special education teacher. And also moving their occupational therapist to a full time role. And the district, as we have alluded to in the past, and you'll hear in much more detail tonight, looking for a director of D E I M B. That when you take all of those positions and you take them at their at their cover. That's about a five hundred thousand dollar additional investment in staff just rest by twenty three. Which is a bit of a sobering number when you think about the idea that. When we look at our appropriated funds, the funds that are two towns contribute on an annual basis. If we ask for a one percent increase in a given year. Or in this year, based on, based on what the base was for FY twenty two, we'd be looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar. Ask, that's a one percent budget increase in the appropriated. Two percent, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So in order to cover that five hundred thousand dollar investment. We would need a pretty significant increase if it was up to the appropriated alone. Now, if we take a step back, I am going to walk through some much more positive cheery news in a moment. That the state's contributions to the school district are currently projected, given the governor's budget. Which is a preliminary budget figure, given the governor's budget, we're looking at about a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase cumulatively. Across the various state sources of of funding. So that four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase definitely offsets. That five hundred thousand dollar investment significantly. However, based on our current staff commitments, just looking at those contractual increases year over year with level staffing. That is a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in and of itself. So when you take the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase based on current staff commitments and. People hoping for a five hundred thousand dollar additional investment in new staff. That nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar total is something that really begins to look quite large relative to where we stand today. Even with that increase in in state funding. So the activity right now within the district is. Really trying to make sure we're, we're turning over all of our piggy banks that we are, that we are looking around and we're trying to evaluate. Best places to make these additional investments and and how to be able to position that so that. When it does come time to budget adoption, we're, we're going downhill as opposed to, as opposed to trying to. Trying to do this with these numbers that you're, that you're seeing here tonight. So that's, that's the, that's the cover look. As I had talked about in terms of seeing a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase in state funding. The, the state goes through a three part budget development process. Part number one is the governor puts forward a proposal, then the house within the state. Does its magic, then the senate. And then finally, we get to a point where a budget budget's adopted. That's later in the spring. And so when we look at the comparison between where we are in FY twenty two, the current year. And what the governor's budget is projecting for FY twenty three, we see the largest increase in chapter seventy that we've seen. In in numerous years. And then the other side, regional school transportation, that's a reimbursement for expenses that we incurred. Last year, so this is based on our, on our transportation costs that we reported last year. A percentage of that being reimbursed by the state. As, as we are. And so the cumulative impact there is about a four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. From the state, which is wonderful. But we're, we're viewing that within the lens of really wanting to try to do more. But we're viewing that within the lens of really wanting to try to do more, more and more and more, and I think it's all very well backed and intentioned, but it's certainly not easy to try to try to figure out how to squeeze in within the confines of a budget as we move from this year into next year. Steve, I think I saw you had a hand up.
Yes, I just want to ask you a question, which I can't remember if we've talked about at the full school committee meeting or if we've only talked about the finance subcommittee meetings. Could you talk a little bit about how our budgets are protected against inflation in terms of you're showing us, you know, some really good data on what our expected increases are for teacher salaries, maintaining, you know, the levels we have now, what the cost would be with the new people we were thinking about, what we hope we might get from the state. You're obviously something on many people's mind right now is the cost increases from inflation. Can you talk a little bit about how that seems to be affecting our budget this year and what you think might happen next year?
So most things that we purchase are prices are set based on state contracts, state and federal contracts, which which do not tend to fluctuate a ton week to week, month month to month. They do fluctuate over the course of years. And so a lot of what people have seen in terms of cost increases with with basic household supplies, we are shielded from that. As we look out well into the future, that is less defined as far as how the state might be foreseeing the cost of, say, notepads going up. But but so far, we have not seen or experienced or or been given any warning of that being something that we'll see. We have seen the same shortages that others have. So our food services group, they have weathered pretty incredible storms over the course of the last six months in terms of trying to just get basic basic produce, meat in into the into the kitchens and being able to use them. Prices have not fluctuated nearly as much as as we had as we had thought they might. But we haven't been completely immune there. And then the area where we've seen the most impact has been as we put things ourselves out to bid. So when we go to do the new facility storage building, or as we look potentially at field and track construction, you know, those are the areas where we're most exposed to what's happening right now within within the greater economy. And part of what I think will be beneficial with the field and track project going out to bid this coming fall and winter, the the site work contractors that will that will be going after those contracts, hopefully they will have cleared some of the current turbulence and they'll be they'll be looking forward to a more stable, more stable work environment. But that's to be seen. Is that addressing the question that you asked, or?
It is. It's just when we're looking at the budget that's coming, it's nice to get a sense of what other hits might we be taking. So, thank you.
Julia.
Is health insurance built into the commitments already made, that line that you had commitments already made? And health insurance is another area that I think can have huge impact on a budget, or at least that's been my experience. So I'm wondering, to Steve's same point, where that fits in?
Yep, and health insurance is is a number that we are certainly worried about. We're a part of Berkshire Health Group. Berkshire Health Group represents most of the municipalities and regional school districts within within Berkshire County. What what we know is already true there is that in this coming fiscal year, we are still going to see the net impact of a of about a 0% change. However, 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 and this is where as we're looking towards FY24, we need to be extremely careful. That is based on a bit of a challenging challenging situation where premiums are going to increase by 8%. But because Berkshire Health Group is in such a great financial bit of shape, we're actually going to see a premium holiday that is pre-planned for one month of this coming year and a 1/12 premium holiday. The net impact of that, along with an 8% premium increase, is that our costs are not going to increase by that 8%. However, for FY24, we need to be mindful of that perhaps not continuing. And if rates need to increase, the net impact of that would be greater than that 8% because because we'd end up seeing rates increasing on top of the already 8% increase that that we're going to be seeing in FY23. So it's it's definitely a warning shot over all of us as we try to move into FY23. And it's something that I think also means we we need to be mindful of keeping reserves ready to be able to bear that burden and and absorb the impact over the course of a few years. So we've got some good news for this coming year, but it's definitely not not all cherry.
Can I, Ursula, do you mind if I ask a follow on question before you go? Your your response, thank you. Super thorough, appreciate that, and makes me raises that question for me of especially as we're talking about staffing increases, which are not one time increases and health insurance, not a one time increase. When when we look at what we can truly afford, are we projecting out multiple years? So that we don't, you know, especially with other pockets of money we may have right now, are we looking out at multiple years?
Yes, that that's a part of what we're doing internally right now as we as we realign everything. We we know what our contractual obligations are for this coming year. We don't know for sure what they are for FY24. That that will be a subject of negotiation. So we're going to need to make estimates and we'll and we'll use low, medium and high type approaches to try to understand what what we might be looking at into FY24, for sure. Ursula.
Okay, so forgive me if this is a dumb question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So on your sheet that you were sharing before, you mentioned that a 1% increase would be 180,000. So our full operating budget is around 18 million?
That is appropriated operating. So that's that is the revenue that we receive from our two member towns. But then we also have Chapter 70, Chapter 71, so we've got state contributions, and then we have grant tuition and school choice expenditures.
Okay, so all that that 4.3 million or whatever it was that you just put up, that's in addition to the 18 million?
Yes, so that the 18 million that represents the assessment letters that we send to our two member towns for operating and capital expenditures. That's after we've already used up all of the other sources of funding that we can.
Okay.
So that the statement that 180,000 would be a 1% increase is that that's if, once we're done with all of the other ways that we can offset our our top line, if we end up with a $180,000 increase that we're bringing to the towns, that's a 1% increase that they're going to be pushing out everywhere.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was assuming it was the 18 million minus the state funding, but that's, thank you for clarifying. I understand. Okay.
Sorry about that. Yep.
No, 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 you're good.
Joe, is it worth mentioning, you know, where we try to come in in terms of increases for the towns? I know that it's, or whether we've heard any feedback from the towns regarding what they're hoping to see from us?
We have traditionally come in somewhere between 1 and 1/2 and 3%, depending upon depending upon the year. And in terms of feedback from the towns, I think that they're still getting their budget legs underneath them as they as they move into this season. And so we have not gotten any concrete information yet as far as what what they could, what they could help us out with. Anything else from the committee? All right. Well, then I am going to move on, if I can open up the document, to the draft ready for review and adoption of designer selection procedures. So as a municipality, as a regional school district, as we are going out to select the new designer for the project that will hopefully go into construction next spring, what we are required to do is to lay out a set of procedures that are included in your packet that fall within all of the state's regulatory framework for the the steps that we take in order to advertise the need for an architect, provide the specifications to the architect that the architect will then respond to, that the architects plural will then respond to, how we will evaluate those responses to our requests for for quotes and proposals. And then how we go about the process of narrowing down the list to a set of finalists, and then how we negotiate with the finalist and how we then execute a contract with the design team that we select. So it's all a very public, thoroughly sleep inducing process outlined over the course of four pages. This is a document and a set of procedures that we reviewed in in line by line detail with the finance subcommittee today that we are asking for school committee approval for, as this is the first step in then allowing us to come to you in March with a plan for, based on those procedures, here is what we're recommending we do in terms of the next step, next steps to have a selection committee move forward with the request to be able to get proposals in from architects. So what we have before you here tonight is just a request to move a motion to accept the designer selection procedures as presented. And that's, that's, I think, what I've got to say on this topic. Are there questions?
Just add that the finance committee, there were two of us present, but we reviewed this line by line and we support it. So Steve, do you want to move it? I think we lost Steve.
Yeah, I was about to say I'm going to move it. I better turn off my video.
Okay.
I will move.
Okay, so Steve moves. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Julia, seconds. Discussion.
A question and a maybe a request. This is aligned, I mean, this is very legally, most of this is legally required, right? I mean, this is 30B or whatever the bidding laws are. Okay. Is it possible, because as I read through this, it's it's dense, and I'm just wondering for our own sake if it were possible to somehow include what a timeline looks like for this. So that we, so it's, I guess, so that timeline is clear in a in a simplified format. Does that make sense?
I think the other thing, Joe, that that you could do is to point out what isn't straight legalese and what we do have a choice on.
Yeah. In terms of a timeline, well, excellent, let me let me incorporate what Carrie just mentioned first, and then we can talk about the timeline that 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 leads to. The the one significant area where we do have some flexibility is within this document from the packet, if you have it with you, bullets nine, 10 and 11 that refer to how the design selection committee will go about the process of negotiating with the top ranked finalist and then negotiating with the second or the third if things cannot go well with with the first. Those steps within some designer selection procedures that are adopted, you can make it so that the design selection committee gets dissolved, the full school committee has to do something again, and then they reset up a new process, and then you can have more back and forths between the full school committee and and the whole process, whereas this is a this is a more compressed version that essentially says we're going to assign this responsibility to a group of people, and then hopefully they're going to come back with a contract ready, ready for us to sign once they're done. So we did choose a path that is less bureaucratic than than some that that might be appropriate for, say, a large scale, big dig type project. And so what it means in terms of a timeline is that once a design a designer selection committee is formed, that committee will put together a request for qualifications. That request for qualifications might take two to three weeks to produce. Trying to be conservative. That request for qualifications, it's produced, will then need to be posted publicly and available for people to work with for at least two weeks. And then, once those responses come in, we would be able to work pretty quickly over the course of a week or two to get the follow up meetings done so that we were able to produce a top ranked finalist. And then we could negotiate with that finalist and hopefully bring a contract back to the school committee following that. So the whole process could be done in as little as a month to select an architect. But depending upon how quickly the the committee can get its RFQ done, how it waits the two week period and then processes the results, you know, a lot of that can end up being subject to meeting scheduling and and numbers of drafts and things like that that are really outside of this procedural type document.
And I I think we also talked about the this committee, the full committee voting on the composition of the selection committee at our next meeting, and that being time enough because we're still working on the budget to then move forward with formulating the request for proposals or quotes. We could talk about what that selection committee might look like, but we don't have to vote it tonight.
Thanks, Joe, and and thank you, Carrie, for for bringing up the committee, because I found myself, I found I think it's clear that at first reading, I thought there was some ambiguity about what was meant by that term, the committee. And I think I still have some questions about who the ultimate decision makers are in this process. So in the procedures proposal that we're going to vote on shortly, the school committee is designated as the approving body. And then the design selection committee is then known as the committee. As we go through the process, the committee is the is the group, whomever they are, that will select the first ranked designer from the finalists, negotiate the fee and contract and communicate its recommendation. Got it. And that's all becoming very clear to me. So then that that brings up the question, as I've answering my own questions in in real time, that that Carrie brought up. How soon does this, who who will ultimately make up, not in terms of like names of individuals, are these all going to be or need to be members of the full committee, presumably they they need to be, or is that the case? And then how soon will, assuming this proposal is 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 approved, how soon will we need to make a decision about the makeup of of this design selection committee?
The designer selection committee does not necessarily need to be comprised of members of the school committee. That is not something that is described by these procedures or necessarily That is not something that is described by these procedures or necessarily confined by law. So whoever you place on that designer selection, I mean, it could in fact be an individual. And that's clearly stated within these procedures. If you wanted to say, Dr. McCandless, you are the designer selection committee from here on out, you are the committee. And that would be a perfectly legal way to go. That said, I think it's up, it's up to the committee as far as meaning the school committee as far as how it wants to go about that. I would, I would suggest that you have a relatively small group of people that, that are able to move fairly quickly through it. And that would be, that would be my recommendation, but at the same time, that's your decision to make.
Yeah, just, just a follow up then on that, Joe. So far in this process, you know, there's certain steps in the process and all the processes that we take that, you know, we ultimately lean on, you know, your advice or Jake's advice, or, you know, in the case of what we've been discussing here on finance subcommittee, the advice of the finance subcommittee. Or even, you know, we lean on precedent. From where I'm situated, you know, I think it feels rather open ended and uncertain and maybe even you know, there's some worry about, about how this process could take place. Joe, do you have any, or maybe two members of the full committee that have participated in similar processes? You know, any, are there recommendations on ways forward for the filling of this committee and how the full committee can go about making this decision?
So I'll just relay that we discussed a couple of possible options in the finance subcommittee this afternoon. One was that it could be the finance subcommittee that continues on with this process, working with Joe and with Jake, right? Two, we talked about the value of bringing in someone from the athletic department early on in the process, even though the designer selection, this stage of it doesn't really have much to do with the content of the proposal. It might be nice to have someone in, on this committee from the beginning. We also talked about the possibility of bringing in outside expertise from the community to sit on this selection committee. So it's really pretty wide open. We went through a similar process with the building project and as I recall, it was, it was quite a small group. And I think you want it, you want it, as Joe mentioned, you want it to be able to move, you know, through the process fairly, not quickly, but efficiently. So I think I covered everyone. Steve has his hand up, so maybe I missed something.
No, I was just going to build on what you said is we talked about how this is very different than the huge building project, you know, the renovation we had for all of Mount Greylock. For that, we had a very large committee. And for those of us who served on it, we can, we can't relate the incredible challenges of getting that committee together to actually meet to get things done. And it is a real challenge with a large committee. So just wanted to add that.
Then, thank you, Stephen. I think you, Carrie, both. I'm about to say something that I hope will land well. So the pauses are meant to be dramatic. Could this be something that the full committee requests of the chair, much as the chair is responsible for the makeup or at least recommending the makeup of our various subcommittees? Is this something that we could ask the chair in consultation with? Perhaps you, Carrie, as the chair of the finance subcommittee who's been participating and you know, in very important steps to this process, Joe and Jake, in terms of, you know, to report back to the full committee, a recommendation for, for the makeup of, of this committee? Thanks, Christina.
Joe, you look like you're about to say something.
I was just gonna say, I think that all of this input is great and I think adopting procedures tonight will be helpful. We can certainly, I think we can take all this back and we can try to figure out one or a couple of different options to then bring to the March meeting so that then the school committee just has a proposal to hopefully accept as far as how to comprise the designer selection committee. I think anything we do tonight might be premature, but also we haven't had a lot of chances to discuss it as the way that it needs to happen.
Okay.
That's, I was sorry, Christina, that seems separate from the proposal that you presented to us, Joe, in terms of the mechanisms by which, you know, the procedure is sort of fulfilled. Could we, I'm assuming we're going to vote because the motion has been seconded on this proposal. And then we'll, I think is what, I think if I'm, I think I'm just reinterpreting or maybe rephrasing what you said to make sure I understood it. We'll hear back from you and or Carrie and or Christina about, about ways forward. Is that right in March? Okay, thanks.
Okay, so any further discussion? We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Julia. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Did you have anything else, Joe?
No, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the superintendent report, so I will turn it over to the superintendent Jake McCandless.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Kind of a dense superintendent report tonight, perhaps a dense superintendent. You may feel that way by the time we get to the end of this. But thank you for, for bearing with us through this, several different topics in this report. And I am gonna, actually, I'm gonna start with the report and then if we can go to the school calendar and then we can get into Zoom, if that's okay with everyone. Is that breaking any rules, Christina?
I don't think so. No.
Okay. Thank you, because I suspect we have some folks on the meeting tonight who are anxious to hear about maybe the director of DEIB or anxious to hear about where we are with masking now that the state has made its pronouncement. And I'd like to give those folks what they came to see and then if they have other things to do this evening, they can, they can feel free. So quickly tonight, just a couple of slides on Panorama Survey. A couple of slides on the new position that we're asking you to consider tonight. It's really just laying it out for you. The real decision will come via the budget process and the budget vote in March. And then several really important COVID-19 updates. Panorama Survey, some of you are familiar with their work, some of you are not. They are a company out of Cambridge, Massachusetts, who really have one purpose. And that is to help schools hear the voices of the people that the schools serve. And that includes our students, our families and the teachers and the staff members who actually do the work with students. We have begun moving forward to work with them. We've had, I think, four or five meetings at this point. I've done several in addition on my own. And we are going to enter into an agreement with Panorama Survey to, to start talking with our staff and surveying our staff and families and students around really important issues like how safe do you feel at school and all of the ways that we can feel safe? And to what degree do you feel you belong at school? We are working with Panorama to get one survey completed for each of the groups that Panorama surveys before the end of this school year and then move into the 22, 23 school year with a full slate of surveys, which depending on how you choose to do this as a school district, is three, four surveys. We will be joining five or six other districts in the Berkshires that use this service to help inform their work and to help them stay in touch with their families and joining hundreds, if not thousands of districts around the country and representing hundreds and thousands of students and families that, that take these surveys. Do you want to talk a little bit tonight and introduce this, this position request for the director of DEIB? As you all know, because I've heard you speak about it, we invest in the things we care about. And we, we all, I know as a school committee and as an administration, we see the budget as more than just a spreadsheet that, that talks about how we're going to spend money. It's really a very much a document that lays out what we believe, who we are. It's a moral document. Our moving forward was seeking a person who has lived experience as a member of a historically marginalized community with a sole focus of working with our students, with our staff and our communities to increase empathy, to increase understanding and connectedness among our students, among our families, among our staff and among the, the whole communities, including the two towns that we serve. This is vital to me and vital to us on many levels. Our investment in this position suggests, and I'm gonna quote Congresswoman Barbara Jordan, who, maybe if you were listening to NPR around 1:25 today to WAMC, you heard the speech that I'm, that I take this quote from, "Our investment in this position suggests that we have a positive vision of the future founded on the on the belief that the gap between the promise and reality of America can one day be closed." That's what this position is really all about, is helping all of our students feel as engaged as they can be in their own schooling, in their own school community. And to, and if we can build that in our school, we can move forward and continue to build it and grow it throughout the rest of our communities and I think throughout our region. Our investment in this position says we can close that belonging gap that I think was illustrated to us very clearly through the work of Courtney Tunis last summer and fall. And we can make Mount Greylock Regional School District the place where everyone who calls our communities home actually has a home here in our schools and the comfort and the sense of security that come with that word home. We are a community, this is simply a three-year look. If you go back five years, 10 years, 15 years, we're a community that is getting more diverse by the year, by the month, by the year. And we will continue to do so. And that's a, that's a gift to the community and it's a gift to all of us. And so we will be including this new district position, the Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging in our fiscal '23 budget proposal. I think, we think administratively that the time for this position is now. We are in the midst of working on national statewide and very localized challenges related to bias, related to a lack of empathy and understanding. And we know that we have a need to increase a sense of safety and belonging for many of our students and many of our families who come from many different situations and represent many different types of diversity. A job description and a more fully fleshed budget for this will be, will be forthcoming as will a posting looking to fill this vital leadership position. And I would encourage you, if you have questions or comments, school committee, just please unmute yourself and say it because I can't really see you. So, but, but as always, feel free. I do want to move into our COVID-19 updates. Steve, I see your hand.
So do you, do you want questions about this now or do you want questions after you go through all the updates?
No, you can go right ahead and ask, ask now, Steve.
Okay, you're breaking up. I, I, you're breaking up, so I'm gonna turn off my video again. So, you know, first of all, I want to thank you and all the members of the community who have been, who've been working for this and you know, showing us why this is needed and what this can be done. And I guess my question is, I'm curious as to how expansive of a role you envisioning for this? For example, I have heard recently about some very troubling incidents with kids being bullied in our elementary schools for their vaccination status or for medical choices. And so I'm curious as to how many communities you envision this working on that, is this to handle the standard situations that we often talk about? Or is this position going to take a real top-down look at the district and just see all the different places? This is one of the things I found most useful about the survey results we got before, which talked about, you know, still some of the issues between students from Lanesboro, students from Williamstown. And so I'm just, you know, curious if you could say a few words about something.
Yeah, well, I would encourage any family that's experienced bullying, bullying because of a health decision or a health-related choice to please be in contact with their principal or their child's vice principal or with me. And, you know, I would see that this role first and foremost really focusing in on on, on the communities, on, on individuals within our community and communities within our community who do represent folks for whom American history through purposeful actions or, or a lack of action as to some degree set up for, for failure or to hold back. I certainly do see this role as somebody whose engagement with students and activities, looking at it through a DEIB lens. And as I'm working to draft and have just an early skeleton of, of the job description, there's certainly pieces of this that are vital in tightening the laces that bind us together between Lanesboro and Williamstown. And we heard Cindy speak tonight about Zoom around the world, which was an opportunity for students from both of our elementary schools to get together. I would certainly see this, this person and this work having a, an important role in, in creating activities and opportunities to bring kids together, staff together and families together from those two towns before they come together as students at Mount Greylock Regional School. I do not see this role in any way as, as a disciplinarian or sort of the director of bullying or the director of anti-bullying. We have procedures and processes and people identified to deal with that. And all of us are also charged with, with doing DEIB work. But I really see this person focusing primarily on, on the communities that, that, that history and society demand and suggest deserve this, this attention.
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. Anybody else before I move on into? Okay, with that, and Julia, you made the clarification in our minutes earlier about that we were not going to eliminate test and stay. And now here we are a month later and I'm going to talk about eliminating test and stay. But it, but it is not, it is not left without something to take its place. So, so everybody understands, you've got a communication last week about our new test at home program. Please understand, folks, we really want you to sign up for this. This is an opportunity for you to get at-home tests. Sometimes they're costly, sometimes they are, they are difficult to find in our community or in other communities. So this is an opportunity to get a test, a test sent home with your child. It's two tests over a two-week period. By participating in testing at home, what you're not doing is opting yourself out of our pool testing program. Our pool testing program has been very important and very successful. And we recently have moved all three of our schools to a Tuesday testing schedule when the courier service that we use to get our tubes from here to Cambridge allows. This move to This move to Tuesday allows us to better make use of this new test and home program that we have adopted from the Commonwealth. All staff and students who sign up for the program receive two at-home tests every two weeks. We are asking participants to please test at home on Friday evening, and we had a lot of conversation about, you know, should we just say to people, test whenever you think you need to test, test whenever you're symptomatic? Which night of the week is better than another night of the week or which day of the week? We finally landed on suggesting to families and asking families to test on Friday after school. This allows families to have a good handle on their child's status before they enter into a weekend full of activities, seeing neighbors, seeing friends, engaging in fun things, seeing family. And then and then students will come back to us on Monday. And then on Tuesday, we'll be pull testing all three of our schools to give us an indicator of wellness for the rest of the week until we head back into that Friday where students can again test at home. This move to at-home testing, I think, was there was sort of a collective sigh of relief across the state from the people that actually do the work of contact tracing in schools and at and reflex follow-up testing and test and stay in schools. This is a very time-consuming activity, very time-consuming. And and data both locally and across the Commonwealth suggests that test and stay was was a an investment of a great deal of time and a great deal of energy with very little return on that investment in in terms of actually slowing COVID down, stopping it, keeping kids from getting sick, keeping staff from getting sick. When this report is posted online, you can click this link at the bottom of the page and it will take you to the testing signup, which is available in several languages. And if you have questions about test and stay, please contact your school nurse or your school principal or Joe or myself. We're we're happy to talk with folks about that. The Desi mask mandate, I'm sure all of you are aware through I Berkshires or the Berkshire.
Before you go into that?
Yes, yeah.
So you had just mentioned at the end that the program we had was not really providing the, and again, if I'm if I'm misphrasing, please please correct me, just want to make sure I understand this correct. That the program we had in place was expensive and not really providing the protection I think we we were hoping for. Is that a good, okay way to view it?
Yeah, I I I don't know that I that I said expensive. I think when I was talking about investment, if it was expensive, it was a lot of time for a lot of us to engage in. So, you know, of course, the tests do have expense, but but Steve, you know, the some information that the commissioner provided us and and I I hate to talk about data when I don't have it right in front of me, but I but I think the test and stay program really for the amount of time that was taken up in in each and every individual school that participated, that the rate of actually finding positive cases through that work was very, very small. I I'm thinking, Joe, like like two and a half percent or under of of those tests were coming back positive, maybe less than that.
And and having spent a significant portion of my life on it over the last six months, I would I would also say that what what the program did was it showed that everything else that we do in school actually is keeping those close contacts from getting COVID. And and so I think that 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 amount of testing, even if it only shows that when you're in school, even if somebody a few feet away from you had COVID, you're going to be okay. I think that that was a valuable thing to learn over the course of all of that effort this year as well. But but we're definitely thankful to be moving past it and and the nurses and principals in particular are are grateful for this this new opportunity.
Oh, I I agree this, I agree that this is extremely important to know. When we were having the conversations initially, there was concern, you know, is three feet acceptable? Is six feet what we need? And in the end, we went with six feet and it's, this is exactly what we need to do. We need to get the data that lets us make informed decisions in terms of how well everything is working. So for me, when I say expensive, I mean both the time it takes for everyone to do this as well as the costs. Because obviously, if our staff is working on all of these items, then that's time that they don't have to do other things. And so my concern about asking these questions is as we go forward to making decisions about what COVID policies do we want to continue with, we have finite resources and we've just seen requests totaling a net, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. And I just want to make sure that the choices we make are financially sustainable. And it's it's not just a function of you. Are we paying for this or is someone else? You know, how much is it going to do? How much is it going to cost the budget for people to be testing at home when they're asymptomatic versus the gain we will get from that additional information?
Thank you, Steve. And and thank you, Joe, for 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 that input as well. And and just not to belabor this, but but we are keeping pulled testing. And so there still will be students testing at school because when we get a positive pullback, we do test all of the members of that pool. But we won't be, but we won't be doing contact tracing and 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 then testing of the contact the via test and stay.
Jake, can I just add one other thing? This is our, sorry, I had my hand up. I just wanted to note that I know, you know, you mentioned the positive rates from the test and stay were low, which I think, as Joe mentioned, is great because it is proving that, you know, there wasn't a lot of spread in schools, which is great. I think cost and time investment aside, what this program did do, it achieved its goal of keeping the kids in school. And we need to remember that, right? There are a lot of kids that would have been home for ten days prior, now five, if they couldn't continue to test and stay. So super thankful for that. I think it was worth it just for that alone. And I I think it was great that we didn't get more positives out of that, but it did achieve a goal in that sense. So I just wanted everybody to be, remember that.
It did. Thank you, Ursula. That's a that's another excellent point. And like I said, folks, I have I have the screen where I can see you reduced to almost nothing. So if you do have a question, just please speak up. So thank, thank you for doing that, Ursula. So mask updates, effective Monday, February twenty-eighth. Of course, you're all aware that the governor announced in a press conference with Commissioner Riley that the the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is ending its statewide K through twelve mask mandate. As as they said they were when it was extended through the end of break. The ending of this statewide mask mandate means that the decision is now again gone back to being a local decision, informed by local health departments and port informed by our school nurses, informed by the people we serve, informed by others who have helped us formulate our own local regional school district COVID response plan. The state guidance, if it were followed fully, applies to all students and all staff, regardless of their vaccination status. When we get to the point locally where we're where we're at a point where we're going to, okay, losing the masks, those local requirements may or may not apply to all students and all staff, regardless of just, we're we're not leaving masks entirely, but but I want to provide a little bit of context for how we're how we're thinking about the mass conversation. So these are current vaccination rates as of today from the Mass Department of Health. Now, a a couple of caveats. We do understand that that we live, you know, those those of us folks that live in Williamstown are in a corner of the state where you're you're closer to a good part of New York and Vermont than you are the rest of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we are, we are thinking that if you happen to go to a physician or a medical practice in Vermont, we don't know the speed or if even if that vaccination information makes its way into the Mass Department of Health database. So, you know, we we think this data is is close, but we don't think this data is exact. And we're going to see this data show up a couple of more times in these next few slides. So Lanesboro, ages five to eleven, forty-eight percent of kids in Lanesboro between five and eleven. Whether they attend our schools or not, we don't know. But but in that age group, forty-eight percent are fully vaccinated with two doses. And just that's what we're using for a definition of fully vaccinated for this conversation tonight. In Williamstown, it's seventy-seven percent of that age group. For our twelve-through-fifteen-year-olds, fifty-four percent in Lanesboro, over ninety-five percent in Williamstown. For our fifteen-to-nineteen-year-olds, most of whom we have at Mount Greylock, sixty-six percent are vaccinated in Lanesboro. Interestingly enough, and this is where we wonder if there's some vaccinations happening in Vermont that are not being reported to the Mass D P H. Forty-seven percent of students in in Williamstown between the ages of fifteen and nineteen are showing up on the the state's official updates on mass.gov as being vaccinated. So if you look at the entire town, fifty-eight percent of Lanesboro is fully vaccinated with two doses. And Williamstown, sixty-five percent are fully vaccinated. Now, this is where we have a gap between the actual people being vaccinated and who's reporting to us at the school that their children are vaccinated. At Lanesboro Elementary, only twenty-eight percent of our students are reporting being double-dosed vaccinated. Williamstown Elementary, it's forty-three percent. And Mount Greylock Regional School, we finally have eclipsed eighty, just like within the last week, we got up to eighty-one percent. So just a little more context before we get back to masks. Our case numbers, just looking at cases, you know, coming back from the December and New Year's holiday to now. Our re- our most recent high point, unsurprisingly, most school districts in the state saw this was when our students came back from December break. We had fifty student cases and twelve adult cases over that two-week period when our students got out for break and when they came back from break. Recently, our numbers have been declining, following a statewide trend. And you could probably even think of it as a northeastern states' trend. The week of January twenty-seventh through February second, which is the last reporting week that the state has data available on, we had nineteen student bases and two adult cases across all three of our schools, which is a pretty vast reduction compared to the fifty and twelve that we had. Just really going back a month or a month and a week or a month and a half ago. Yesterday is the day that, on Wednesdays, is when we report the the previous week to the Commonwealth. Yesterday, we reported twenty-one student cases across our three schools and three adult cases. So a little bit of an increase from the week prior to that, but nothing too dramatic. So in general, our cases have been going down since our return from break. However, at this point, we are not considering lifting the mask requirement until we have data stretching out at least, at a minimum, two to three weeks following our return to school after spring break. I have to say, you know, as a school leader in the Commonwealth, I was I was rather surprised. I was expecting when we got the email at ten o'clock at night on Tuesday that the that the commissioner wanted us all on a Zoom call at nine thirty before the governor's press conference. I was assuming that he would maybe be taking a page out of like the New Jersey governor's playbook and saying, so we're back from break on the twenty-eighth. We're going to make the mask restrictions go away two weeks from that point. So we can see what what the aftermath of break looks like. I was a bit taken aback that that was not the case. But that is the case, but we are not lifting our mask requirements as of Monday, February twenty-eight. It just does not strike me as the right thing to do. We need time to work with local health officials. We want to hear from the families that we serve. We want to hear from the staff that we work with. We want to hear from our students who have thoughts on this. And so we will not be looking at unmasking for at least two or three weeks. And in honesty, I'm not sure that that is the absolute highest priority for a lessening of requirements that we have here in the Mount Greylock Regional Schools. But we do see many other opportunities to open up a little further and return to some normalcy, even if we continue to keep masks. I want to go back.
Jake, sorry, Jake.
Yeah, jump in, please.
Matt, sorry, I I was unclear how how best to ask questions on this. The just two points of for clarification and and no need to, you know, address them now, whenever you think it's most appropriate.
Okay.
And I'm almost, I'm on the verge of forgetting them as soon as they pop into my head, forgive me. But the the first is thinking about the the metrics that we, and I think we'll probably talk about where the responsibility for the decision to eventually unmask lies, but, you know, are we going to use a specific set of metrics that will guide that decision? Is the first step. And then I think on the the latter point that you just raised before you you jumped to your next slide was regarding other measures other than unmasking that might move, you know, this, the 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 school experience for our kids to something that that appears more normal. Just just would love you to, you know, to expand on on what that might mean here or or whenever you think it's most appropriate. Thanks.
Yeah, I I think those are actually perfect questions. The the second question I'm going to answer in about two slides. The first question is, you you know, when when we confer with the physicians that we confer with, and this is going back, you know, maybe a month, a month and a half, they suggested, you know, they suggested that ninety-nine to ninety-five percent of students being vaccinated is where, you know, you can really with full confidence or pretty full confidence move forward with 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 adults and students taking their masks off if they choose. And that was really in the context of a conversation that, you know, we we don't really want to, you know, the world is divisive right now. We're not particularly interested in forcing some kids to wear masks because of their vaccination status and having other kids not wear masks because of their vaccination status. We're not interested in policing that, to be honest, and they don't know that we have the the full capability while respecting a family's privacy to police that. So, you know, when we when we think about metrics, those are sort of our upper-level guiding metrics that that if we get to ninety to ninety-five percent of individuals vaccinated, we can do it very comfortably and confidently. But that, it could also be five years before we get to that ninety or ninety-five percent, just being realistic. So I I think we are looking at some other metrics that make sense, including where are we as a state? Where are we as a county? Where are we in our region inclusive of our neighbors in Vermont? Our neighbors in the the northeastern part of Berkshire County and our neighbors in New York State. One thing we're we're completely not going to suggest is that we have threshold metrics that drive, we're masking this week and not masking next week. We we understand the toll that took on all of the families that we served last year around whether we're in for school in person. And we are not going to go back to something like that. I I hope that helps a little bit, and then I'll get to your second question in a couple of minutes.
No, that's perfect. I think Stephen will have a question in just a second. Just you're just a follow-up, Jake, again, whether now is appropriate or or some of the times is 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 more appropriate. You know, other districts, and this is no, I'm not advocating or recommending, just just curious to hear your take on mandates, district-wide vaccination mandates, like we have for, you know, other other types of disease. Whether that's something that we're considering now, we might consider in the future or 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 not. Just curious to hear your your take on that.
Yeah, I if you're if you're talking about for students, and I assume I assume you're talking about students. I think I have to follow, you know, the the advice of our attorney, the advice of the attorney that works for the the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, that, you know, and until there, when and if there is a federal decree that this is now one of the must-have vaccinations, I am not sure that we have the legal authority. I am certain we would not have the legal backing from the Commonwealth or from the Department of Ed. And so that that's not going to happen unless unless something happens at the national level.
Yeah, thanks, Jake.
You're welcome. Steve?
Yes, so even though you were the one who answered it, I want to thank Jose for asking the questions which prevented me from having to ask them. So there's a lot of things I want to comment on. And so first of all, you know, thank you for all the work and all the conversations on this. In some kind of semi-random order, I think it's really good not to have hard metrics that guide what's going on. I think one of the things we learned was having the health task force that could get in the room and just talk about what's going on and put the numbers in context, put the situation in context. And that's, you know, really, you know, in some sense, what we're paid to do, what we're serving to do is to make informed, data-driven decisions and to be able to really see what everything means. One of the things I have been advocating for quite a while, I've been, you know, trying to bring up at several meetings, is to have school committee policy revolving around two items. One is that we should always state what is the science behind our decision or say that there is none, that it's not settled yet. And two is to ask, what does the local, what do the local health officials say? And I was very heartened to hear the discussions happening with the local health officials as to, you know, their advice, and they were playing a key role. And yeah, this is, you know, not said nearly enough. In those joint conversations we had throughout the whole time in terms of how we deal with things. I thought it was, you know, really good to hear that we are working to create an inclusive environment where all the students are treated the same because it can be very easy to put a label on someone vaccinated, unvaccinated, and not really go into the depths and the details as to why someone has made choices. And you're given the fact that I've heard that there has been bullying and other things going on. We do not want our teachers to be serving as masked police. There's also questions, of course, as to who would get to know the status of students in terms of, you know, their vaccinations and whatnot. So I was, you know, very happy to hear that. I guess my biggest question where I would like some more information is the decision of when to start releasing students from being required to wearing a mask to it is optional for teachers, staff, and students to wear masks. Because again, no matter what is decided, people always have the right to wear a mask. And looking at what was said from the governor. So you know, I've got the, you know, I don't know if it's the exact text of what he said or just a quote, but you know, given the extremely low risk to young people, the widespread availability and the proven effectiveness of vaccines and the distribution of accurate test protocols and tests, it's time to give our kids a sense of normalcy and lift the mask mandate on a statewide basis for schools. And so along those lines, I understand completely not changing things right after a vacation, you know, as we saw in the past with, you know, December break. This is a time when you can have a spike. But I would like to hopefully hear plans for what would happen, hopefully two to three weeks after the February vacation.
You'll not hear those plans tonight, Steve, but 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 your point is is taken.
And and just along those lines, one of the questions I and many people have is just how effective are the cloth masks and the other masks the kids are wearing in school? Are they really doing anything significant for vaccinated kids? You know, for asymptomatic kids in terms of cutting down the risk of infecting others with COVID? And you, we talked earlier tonight about how the contract tracing was just very expensive in terms of the gain that it was giving. And so I had asked that the school committee send a letter to the Commissioner of Education. And if this is not the appropriate time to mention this, I can mention it elsewhere. But when we get these letters from the commissioner about either recommendations or mandates from the state as to what we can do, it's very useful if they could provide documentation as to how they came to these decisions. So how did they come to the decision that the time has now changed where they now want to relax this? And I know as a school committee member who has to, you discuss this both on the committee with you, with members of the community, it would be very useful to have, here's the scientific studies which convince us that this is now the right thing to do and that people can feel safe when this is done. I know when the pandemic, you know, first erupted, and you know, we're now about to hit year three, you don't have time to do a long study, you don't have time to gather all the data. You have to make decisions quickly. We're no longer in that boat. We have enough time now that we can have the data gathered and we could be making informed decisions as to how effective are these procedures? How effective are these policies? Are they really doing anything to help at a significant level? Or are they just making us feel more comfortable? Yeah, so if we could get in future letters from that's the commissioner, I I think it would make it much easier for us to have conversations with the community as to why are we doing what we're doing and when we're doing it. Yeah, I I agree with you that coming right back from spring break does not seem the right time to flip the switch.
Yeah, and I, you know, and
maturely out to that, hopefully. Thank you.
In in terms of, thank you, Steve. And in terms of the masks, I think we've known for some time that there are there are masks that are more effective than others. You know, paper mask or surgical mask is is much more effective than a cloth mask or a bandana. A K N nine nine four, a K N nine five is much more effective than that and actually protects the the wearer as well as, you know, what what masks were really about was was not as much to protect the wearer, but to protect the people that the wearer is around. And I and I do know, you know, the CDC is continuing to recommend masks in schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics is continuing to. And so, you know, as I said, we'll we'll be looking at this ongoing and looking at our data in the in the days and the weeks when we get back from school. All of your points are well-taken. This this next slide is sort of a return to our local vaccination rates versus some three school districts that that I could have picked other ones. I'll tell you why I picked these ones. These are our three school districts. Needham Public Schools, Westwood Public Schools, Situate Public Schools. I'm sorry that they're all Eastern Math Schools. They are all three schools who took advantage of the state's mask off-ramp program in that when they hit eighty percent of their middle and high school students and staff combined were at in over an eighty percent vaccination rate, they took their masks off. If you look down here, I'm going to going to start down at the bottom and work our way up. Looking at the week of January twenty-seventh to February second, Mount Greylock Regional School District, one point eight percent of our student body was COVID positive over the course of that week. In Needham, much, much bigger student body, as is the case with both of these school districts, less than one percent of their student body were had COVID in that week. In Westwood, double our size, double and then maybe some. Less than one percent of their student body had COVID during that week. Situate, only one point two percent of their student body had COVID over that week, where one point eight percent of our student body had COVID. Now, these are all three schools that were completely unmasked, except for, as Steve said, for people who opted to wear a mask, completely unmasked. And you can see that these three schools had lower positivity rates among their student body than we did. Now, I picked these three school districts, A, because they're bigger, but but B, they they all chose to unmask. And and they they all participate in the pool testing program, which many districts don't. Fewer do with every month that goes by. But what I really want to focus on now is, okay, they were unmasked. They had lower rates than we had. Look at their vaccination rates. In Needham, eighty-eight percent of students five to eleven are vaccinated. Twelve to fifteen, fifteen to nineteen, over ninety-five percent of those middle and high school students are fully vaccinated. In Westwood, again, over ninety-five percent of those middle and high school students are fully vaccinated. In Situate, only eighty-one percent of sort of the traditional middle-aged, middle-school age kids are vaccinated. At the high school, it's over ninety-five percent. So I I I show this slide to show that I I think we're starting to see, to some degree, a body of proof in the Commonwealth. And and there are a dozen other districts I could have picked out that the to to me is the superintendent, and at least at this point, the person who through our policy is charged with making this decision. It strikes me that our our fastest, best-paced road road to taking off our masks is to have as many students as we can be vaccinated, as many students who are able to be vaccinated. Moving forward, you know, as we continue to to look at how we make this decision about how we unmask, we'll be looking at our local vaccination data. We'll be looking at our local case data. We'll be looking at other indicators in determining our own local mask requirements. We will continue to consult with physicians locally, with our local health officials, including our our health department leaders and our health boards. We'll also confer with our employees who go into school and and do the work every day. We'll be conferring with our families. I've had quite a bit of feedback already from families. And we will continue tracking the data in our communities. We are currently considering the timing of all moves to lessen our current restrictions. We want kids to have as normal of a school year as they can have. Ursula made the point earlier in this presentation that test and stay may have taken a lot of time and used a lot of resources for for not identifying many positive cases. But what it did do, and I'm grateful to you, Ursula, for making the point, it allowed us to stay in school. It allowed our kids to be here five days a week, six and a half hours a day. And that was really what we were shooting and trying to do. But now we want to not only have them here as much as we can, but we want to get back to a more normal look for our school day because we know that it's good for kids. And we know that it's important for kids and the and the people that love those kids, including our staff and the and the people that work with our children. We are looking at moving back to more regular lunches. That's a lengthy conversation we had with a local physician the other day. We are looking at expanding our field trip options. So we are looking at welcoming back families and other guests into our schools. I have this next set of bullets, Jose, and I hope this starts to maybe answer your second question. As of Monday, February twenty-eighth, this is our intention by way of loosening things up in in ways that we think are still safe. And part of this is because of the the number and the proportion of these particular student groups that I'm going to be addressing, who are indeed vaccinated and fully vaccinated. So when we return Monday, February twenty-eighth, our athletes may be unmasked while actively playing games and or having matches. We are asking them to be masked when they're on the bench, practice, when they're not on the floor, on the court, or on the wrestling mat. And anybody that's watched a wrestling match where kids are wearing masks, the masks actually stay in place for, I think the world record is probably about fifteen seconds into the match. Our musicians, our actors, our dancers may rehearse and perform unmasked when we get back on February twenty-eighth. We have a musical, the first weekend of March, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. We're all very excited about it. We want the kids to to be doing their thing without masks. We looked at at how many of those students are vaccinated and we feel very comfortable in letting those students go ahead and and let their full selves show through on stage. We are also, as of Monday, February twenty-eighth, we are we are losing our audience capacity limits. So for the musical, we are requiring that folks that go to watch the music are masked. I will be one of those masked people. But we are not limiting students to to four tickets apiece. We we anticipate we may have a a pretty full theater. Our air handling systems will be on. The audience will be in masks, the students will be on stage. And and we're doing the same for wrestling matches and basketball games that we're hosting after February twenty-eighth. This one is particularly for the middle and high school because we have sort of dropped these restrictions at the elementary school. We're going back to letting kids do group and project work. We're letting students sit in the more in the ways that that individual teachers choose to set up their classrooms and 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 relaxing our distance requirements in classroom. That doesn't sound like a big deal, but I think for a lot of teachers and a lot of students because of the way that they like to do their work best, it's a pretty big deal. And then this next bullet is really primarily for Williamstown Elementary School. Our entrance and exit procedures will return to normal. Those of you who are who are parents or guardians or caretakers or or grandparents or helping out a neighbor and dropping somebody off at at Wes, you know that we use almost every entrance on the bottom floor, on the ground floor. We are not going to do that anymore. We're going to go back to our traditional church street entrance and the entrance back by the Williamstown Youth Center. And then we are going to continue looking at opening up for field trips. We are going to look at returning lunches to normal. And and we are definitely looking forward to welcoming families and other guests, speakers, assemblies back into our schools. And so that's that's the moves that we're making in an effort to to take away some restrictions.
Ajay, a quick question. To the, with regards to the bullet that you said on sports, the first one here, does the M I, does the M I A A policy support that or what, how does that work?
The M I A A policy definitely supports that.
They're they're okay with unmasked during?
That they they are, we're we're waiting for that to come out. But but even now, there there are many districts across the state who have not required masks for kids that are actively playing. So we're, we think we're because we're fortunate to have, you know, the M I A Board Chair as our Athletic and Activities Director. So I spent quite a bit of time with her over these last couple of days, you know, discussing particularly athletics and and the musical. And we're we're really excited about giving giving students some stuff back and giving families, quite honestly, some stuff.
Not to interrupt or to break in front of Steve, but it's along Ursula's same lines that the athletes and extracurriculars, they're required to be a part of pool testing. Is is that true or is that?
That is, that is true.
So they have that added extra protection to you?
Yes, and and we did, we did bef- before announcing these moves publicly for the first time this evening, we did go through and look at the rosters and who was vaccinated and how many for in the cast list. And we think this is a, we we think this is a responsible thing to do. And and at this point in time, an important thing to do. Steve?
So, thank you, you know, a couple of items again. And so first off, you're just repeating what Ursula said and what you said in response. It's really good to have programs like Test and Stay when we start to get some data that lets us know how effective our choices, are they actually doing what we want them to do? Or are they just helping us feel more comfortable? Which is important. I mean, I remember personally how hard it was for me as we could start going back to shops to, you know, actually physically go inside your building. And it's it's going to take a while after living like this to get back to normal. Along those lines, I was wondering if there are any thoughts to do easing into situations like this. So rather than doing the entire school, you do a grade or two first or in a, you know, grade or a classroom, have some kind of hexagonal pattern where the people are unmasked. have some kind of hexagonal pattern where the people are unmasked in terms of just slowly moving in, getting some data, seeing how things are. Along those lines, I really liked the fact that you said to have, I'm sorry, if you want to interrupt me, please.
No, go ahead.
The other thing is I really liked how, okay, sorry. I really liked how you said to have people get vaccinated as they can. I think that's a great way to phrase it. And I just wanted to remind people that I believe, and Christine, I can correct me if I'm wrong, that the school committee has in fact, in the past, recommended, or, you know, the people who are able to get vaccinated, to get vaccinated. That we have said, you know, something like that before. It's, you're very useful to see the numbers that you provided. I would love to see numbers as well that talk about how effective are the masks that students are wearing in the building at actually preventing transmission. And so if everyone's wearing your KN ninety-five, that's one thing. But from the scientific studies I've seen, I have not been overwhelmed with confidence that the regular masking we're doing is providing significant protection in these age groups of children. And so just you again, in terms of being data driven, it would be wonderful to have data from hopefully the state if they have something like that, just some explanation behind how they came to their decisions. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jose?
Yeah, thank you, Jake. It's a, a different line of questions than, um, than those that, that Stephen posed you. And I was gonna preface this by appreciating the fact that we're on Zoom, because if we weren't on Zoom, Jake, there's all likelihood that many of us might rush and kiss you on the cheek. Because these are, I think, are just fantastic in terms of what it means for our students. And I'm, and I, it's hard not to wear the parent hat when I, when I read this. So a couple of questions, just to clarify, for those of us who are parents of elementary school kids. Are these policies district wide? So, you know, we're imagining, you know, selfishly, a parent of a, of a future sixth grade performer of the Williamstown Elementary play, for instance, are, are these, are these things that elementary school parents can also, that the kids can expect to, to participate and, and enjoy?
They are, they are. And I'm glad you asked that because it's an important point to clarify, and it's a very important point for those among us that are excited about Shrek. And, and, and there's other, you know, there's other performance opportunities coming up at both of our elementary schools. And, um, you know, so, so all of these apply at all three of our schools, Jose.
Thank you, Jake. And then the final question that I have for you, again, it speaks only to, you know, my experience as a parent of, of Williamstown, of Williamstown Elementary School students. But I, you know, I, I can imagine that it's something that, that parents at Lanesboro Elementary also, also enjoyed. But the entrance and exit procedures, some parents are pre, you know, during that, those wonderful pre-pandemic times, were accustomed to walking their kids directly to classrooms as a part of normal entrance procedures. Could you just clarify, you know, what these normal like procedures might look like after February twenty eighth?
Yeah, that is from, from, from a security and safety standpoint, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a lovely thing to do from a safety and security standpoint. We'll have to talk about that. That is not what I was talking about with these. I was, I was really talking about the, and, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify. I was talking about the doors that students will use. But, but I do think, Jose, to that point, you know, the dozen or so parents that I, that I talk to and commiserate with as I'm walking into one of the school buildings and they're outside in the cold, waiting to take their child to the dentist or to the doctor or to do something. Those folks will now be able to come in and, 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 and pick up their children in person and, and, and not have to wait outside anymore. So and, and then the other pieces, we will, we will continue to look at as we, as we go along.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you. Say, say prayers of thanks for Zoom, Jake, because there'd be many of us who would be.
I will, I will take a rain check on the kiss on the cheek. You can, you know, that, that's to the whole community. Now, we're, we're really, we're really, you know, as, as much as, and Steve put it well, that it's almost, it's going to take some getting used to for all of us to get back into these normal things. You know, we, we, the, the, the physicians that we work with are talking about, you know, the, the, the fast approach, approaching potential for the vaccine being approved down to six months, six month old children, which means that our families who are sending kids into our schools and then welcoming kids back with, with really infant siblings will have an opportunity for, for, for enhanced protection. Although their date, I was looking out about an hour and a half ago and it was snowing right outside of my window. So you couldn't tell at that point, but spring is coming and the opportunity to do more outside. So we're, we're feeling very hopeful, guardedly so. We are, as we try to do with everything, going to do these things thoughtfully. And, and in a way that's informed, not only by what science and experts say, but by what the people we're actually here to serve say. And really just sort of reaching the end of this, the, the, the point I was trying to make with all of those slides and looking at our vaccination rates, looking at our COVID rates in three or four different weeks, looking at Situate and Needham and Westwood. One of the points that I think we can take from living through COVID now with the vaccines being around for about a year and about six months for, for our younger students, vaccinations work to keep people from being hospitalized and dying. They just do. I, I don't know how you can argue with that data. So please, please get yourself and get your child vaccinated if you are able to do so. And please, where it's appropriate and where it's available, and if you're able, please get all three doses of the vaccine. Another point that we have to make, we can do this. We can move into more and more of a normal school life for our kids and for our employees. We can do this. Vaccinations and then reporting to the school about vaccinations. So we have a real sincere handle on, on the data that we're using to make these decisions is vital. So please get vaccinated if you're able. And if you are vaccinated, please, please let us know. Because this is really an important set of information to have as we try to move forward in the best way we can for kids. In, in closing, and then I'm happy to take any questions that didn't get asked during the rest of this lengthy presentation. Many thanks to, to so many people before I close the superintendent's report. This month of January has been a brutal month for, for our, our custodians to try to keep up with snow and ice. It's just almost a losing battle. And it's been a really tough month for the folks that, that plow our roads and in Williamstown, clear your sidewalks. And I'm jealous of you every time I have to clear my sidewalk or face a fifty dollar fine as a resident of Pittsfield. So thank you to all the folks that are doing that work. I know I've had conversations with, with everybody. Craig from the town, Charlie from Lanesboro, and, and with Jim and Brandon and Ryan and Glenn down in Lanesboro. Everybody's to the point where they would welcome two or three feet of snow, but just please no more ice. So thank you to all the people that do that work because it's not easy. Thank you to all of our coaches. Thank you to our sponsors, the people that make musicals happen, the people that do our clubs. Thank you for making those things happen to our kids. Thank you to our, to our families for hanging in through what continue to be weird times. Thank you to our students for the same and to our colleagues who, who do the work in our schools. And, and as we enter into budget season, it's a good reminder. Thank you to all of you who serve on select boards and finance committees. And thank you to the folks that populate these boards and committees that make our two towns run. And that, that, that it just handles such a wide array of topics. It, it almost boggles the mind. We're, we're very grateful to be here, working with you, working for you, serving you and, 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 and being served by you. So with that, unless there are any questions, that's the superintendent's report. And now I'll look at my watch to see how long it was and I will shudder and cringe inside.
Do we need?
Julia, did you have a question?
Preliminary calendar. I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. This is going to be the fastest walk through a school calendar ever. So this is, as you can see on this calendar, can everybody see that? And thank you, Julia, for the visual reminder of actually holding it up for me. This is our proposed school calendar. It, it is, it's a new format, as those of you that have been around for a while can probably see. We're looking at our first day of school for students in grades one through twelve, Wednesday, August thirty first. Our first day of welcoming back our, our, our pre-K and kindergarten students, Tuesday, the Tuesday after Labor Day. All of these boxes that are clear but have the slashes through them, those are half day PD days. That was a, a newish thing that we instituted last year because there's just a lot of work we need to do in terms of academics, in terms of social and emotional learning. So we, we kept several half days. November, Tuesday, the, the eighth, we have as a full PD day. I believe that's Election Day. And as, as Williamstown Elementary is used as a polling place, we were thinking that that would be a good day for students not to be there, just would let everybody breathe a little easier. And so we made that a, a full professional development day, looking at a half day on Friday, December twenty-third, before the December break. Looking at Thanksgiving break, including the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a day off out of sensitivity for folks that hopefully in November of twenty-two, you know, will be back to traveling for Thanksgiving in the way that, that, that some folks traditionally do. And then if, if all goes well and we have a great winter, as I am here and now, write it down in your diaries predicting we will have an easy, nice, ice-free winter next year. We would be getting out on Tuesday, June fifteenth, if we don't have snow days. If we do have snow days, accounting for five additional days and accounting for celebration of Juneteenth on the nineteenth, our last day of school would be Wednesday, June twenty-first. So we, we did, we've put this calendar through several layers of review. We are not running up against, to our knowledge, with the start of school. This past year with kindergarten, we, we, my fault, we, we ran up against a, an important time for, for folks of the Jewish faith. And it, and it caused some really difficult decisions for people that we care about and, and we're very sorry for that. That does not happen in this year's calendar. And we, we tried to give it a look through several layers of, of those types of lenses. So I don't know. Carrie?
Um, yeah, as, as I recall, there used to be objection to starting school prior to Labor Day. We're just not seeing that anymore. Is, I assume the reason for starting so early is so that we get out earlier? Or is there another reason?
No, it's, it's really around, I mean, the, and Joe, I'm gonna, I might need to tax your memory a little bit. Did we change this in the contract language that we would not? I, I think what we proposed to the, to the Magia, the, the Educators Association is that we would not look to, we would not look for any duties to begin prior to the last Monday in August. Because Labor Day can move around and there, there's, it doesn't happen, you know, every year, but Labor Day could be like as as the, the seventh or the eighth or the ninth. And then you're really getting a late start for school. And so we will be, you know, we're giving you a first look at this tonight. We, we don't anticipate that we'll have objections over doing two, two, you know, teacher days on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And then asking, inviting our students back in on the thirty-first.
The only contractual topic is that, is that the work here should not begin prior to August twenty eighth?
Yeah.
No, earlier than August twenty eighth.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you for that, Joe.
Yep.
Julia?
Um, two potential formatting points and then, and then a more substantive question.
Yeah.
When I first looked through it, December twenty-third, which is dark and slashed, I was not clear if that was a half day for students or not. And I, having written school calendars and miscounted the days, I, I counted the days on this one. So I figured out that was a school day. But I suggest it be white, because I think parents might get confused.
Good point. Thank you.
And especially if they're planning vacations or whatever, if they're going to go visit relatives or something. I, there's a triangle that denotes special dates and I just wonder, I don't, it's in the key. Just want to name it in the key, but I don't see it anywhere in the document.
Thank you. I don't either. So thank you for that.
Okay. The, the more substantive question is, this clearly meets the one eighty requirement. Hundred eighty days. How does it stack up against the nine hundred ninety for the middle high school? And I actually don't remember the number for that.
Nine hundred. It's nine hundred, nine hundred for the lower school. We're, we're good with the nine ninety and the nine hundred. I don't have the exact, and in fact, we're, we're over. But we're good, we're good with that.
Great.
Any other questions about the calendar? And we'll be bringing that back after a little bit more work and, and for, for a full approval, but we wanted folks to get a look at it tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the discussion to support the continuation of remote meetings. We, I think we have an extension beyond what was originally stated for remote meetings for public. I think it ends in April. Is that correct? And so we have started having discussions in particular about subcommittees and how beneficial remote meetings have been in particular to subcommittees in terms of scheduling and, and getting to them for, for our members. So I think that's where this, that's where this agenda item comes from. I don't know. Jake, do you want to add?
Yeah, I, I, you know, in, in conversations with several of you and, and in observations of, of using Zoom now in two different districts over two years, the, the, the use of Zoom for things like five oh four meetings and disciplinary hearings and IEP meetings and, and things that are opportunities for school staff and administrators and parents to come together. We will certainly continue to use Zoom because it makes the lives, the lives of the families that we serve easier. People that struggle with transportation don't have to worry about lining up a ride. People that, that just cannot ask for another day off or half a day or two hours. We can sneak in a half an hour meeting during somebody's lunch break. So we, we will continue to use Zoom for academic purposes because it serves families better and makes their lives easier. My observation, again, particularly working in a regional school district where it's not a five-minute trip to get in your car and go to the school or go to the it's not a five-minute trip to get in your car and go to the school or go to the town hall where a meeting is happening, knowing that some of us, you know, last year, I was, I was, I was not in Western Massachusetts for a good part of January last year because my mother was dying. But I was able to not only work, I was able to be a part of several subcommittee meetings and school committee. And that was a real gift to my entire family. Some of you have had health concerns, childcare concerns, work concerns, you know, your own health concerns. That it strikes me, it's been very beneficial to be able to join a subcommittee meeting or sometimes even the full committee meeting via Zoom and to do business that way. Carrie made a good point tonight during the finance subcommittee meeting. There's some times when it's a real pain not to be in person. You know, when you're looking at a budget that's 15 or 20 pages of a spreadsheet, you wanna be there with people with your finger on papers. That's an excellent point. So this is not to say that we should not do away with in-person meetings. But I guess, long story short, what I am offering to do, and Steve, I'll catch you in a second, is I am happy to draft a communication that goes to the governor's office, to the attorney general's office, to the MASs, to the MASc, to our legislative delegation, really whoever it needs to go to, to suggest that especially in a large geographically regional district like this one, that being able to conduct our public business via Zoom, not only, I think it makes the current people that are serving, it makes your lives doable and it makes your service doable. I think it will increase the diversity of the type of people who are willing to step up and serve on committees like the school committee. And I think in all honesty, looking at the number of people that are watching this meeting who are not elected members of the school committee, I would suggest that it actually increases public interaction with the business of the school committee and public give and take, because I don't know how many folks on a cold February night would have wanted to come and sit in a room at Mount Greylock for two or three hours. So I would, I would suggest that this is one of the opportunities the pandemic has thrust upon us in that we could have a voice to try to take advantage of this opportunity moving forward into hopefully an endemic world. So, Steve and then Jose. Steve, are you there?
Most things I wanted to say, which makes this easy. I brought this up in,
Yes.
Yeah, I'm having issues tonight. Can you hear me? I'm turning off the video. Every time I turn on the video, I just can't be heard.
We can hear you.
So, yeah, first of all, thank you for bringing up most of the points in favor. Okay, thanks. Thanks for bringing up most of the points in favor, which saves me a lot of time. You know, I brought this up in the finance subcommittee meeting a while ago, just because we've seen how effective it is, especially for working people, for people who have young children. For all of our talk about inclusion, this is one of the best ways we can make sure that we have, you know, the ability of everyone to serve. So I strongly support something like this. I do think it's important to have some in-person meetings. For most finance committee meetings, I think it's fine to do this by Zoom. I think we should have some full school committee meetings, not every month, but especially right now with all we'll have about moving back to the new normal. I think it sends a very powerful signal, and I know I'm committing myself to this, but you know, I think it sends a powerful signal for us to have some meetings in person where people can still participate in a hybrid model, so that when we're trying to design how we go forward, we've seen we do have the technology to allow people to either be in person or to come remotely. So thank you for putting this.
Thanks, Steve. Jose?
No, thanks, Jake. I think, actually, in some ways, I don't know if Stephen can hear me, I think, you know, the internet issues that he's having tonight, that some members of our communities might, you know, who knows, they might also be having. I think it's important for us to to be sensitive to, you know, to those hurdles, to, you know, in terms of participation. That said, I think, you know, given the feedback that we've heard from our respective town committees in terms of increased participation and engagement that Zoom has allowed, you know, I think, you know, I think it's not appropriate necessarily to talk about silver linings that the pandemic has given us or blessings in disguise, but I think, you know, participatory democracy in some ways, I think, has really benefited from, you know, from this platform. And as someone who's only been a member of a virtual school committee of sorts, you know, it's not obvious to me how better, much better our work can be conducted in person. Hearing Steve's point, you know, and hearing the voices of my colleagues from, you know, during our retreat a couple of weeks ago, you know, one model might be that, you know, the retreats, as best as we can manage them, you know, could provide in-person, you know, opportunities for the school committee to to conduct its work and to work alongside each other. So I welcome and support, you know, Jake, your proposal to request to our state officials for, you know, for permission to continue this format. I think, you know, and selfishly as a as a parent of young children, it certainly makes my participation in the school committee, you know, much easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina and then Julia?
Yes, so just in support of this proposal, one of the things I wanted to mention, which you touched on in terms of being a regional school, is when we were meeting in person, typically we met at the middle high school, which is, in some sense, is a lot more difficult for most Lanesboro residents to get to. It's a lot further away geographically. And I had heard from, you know, a few people how it prohibited them from going to meetings because it was always in Williamstown and they had wished that sometimes the meetings would be held in Lanesboro so that was easier for them to get to them. It just felt like they were always being asked to go outside. Whereas, you know, so that's just from a perspective of a Lanesboro resident, that these Zoom meetings have really, again, allowed for more participation in that realm. So definitely appreciate the discussion.
Thanks. Julia?
So I think I heard you say that you're gonna draft this request for consideration. And I wanna ask, it feels like this is something that, and maybe the interest isn't there amidst all the other priorities they may have, but the Mass Association of School Superintendents or the Mass Association of School Committees, if it could be somehow done in conjunction with a larger body, it may be more impactful. So I'm just wondering if that's possible or if you've explored it or if they have a lot of priorities, maybe this isn't the top one.
Yeah, I am not seeing this as a priority through the MASs. They have about a half a dozen significant priorities. This is not among them. And I suspect that many communities feel quite differently about this perhaps than we do. We are, we are a region. We, we, unlike other committees that I have served, I don't think there's a retired individual on our school committee. You know, you are, maybe some that wish they were, and I might join you occasionally. But, and not that retired folks don't have super busy lives, but it's, for this community, it seems to have worked. But I will definitely check in with MASc and see if, I could even check out and see if there's any regional interest in the Berkshires.
Or with the other regional districts.
Yeah, Mars. Yeah, the regional, yeah, the Association of Regional Schools might have some thoughts on this too. Yeah.
And have you, this also feels like something to maybe speak to our delegation about?
Yeah, I was, I was going to reach out to John and to Adam and see
Yeah.
where, you know, if we could get their shoulders pushing on to this, if the committee was interested in. Ursula?
Yeah, sorry, I won't beat the dead horse too much, but I'd also just like to express my support as a Lanesboro resident, as a, you know, a working person, I'd be hard-pressed to get up to Greylock every two weeks for the finance committee meetings and being able to jump on on Zoom is, again, like Jose, I've only been doing this remotely, but it's made it much more feasible for me to be able to do all these meetings and it would be much harder if we lost that ability to some extent. So I support it as well.
Thank you. Jose, is your hand again?
It is only.
It's all good.
That for some of us Williamstown residents, Mount Greylock, that school can seem, can seem pretty far away too.
Yeah.
Let's just throw it out there. It's a trek to get out there, for sure.
Absolutely.
True.
Yeah, it's really just fun in front of a farm, right?
Steve? One other item to add. I remember many years ago, I was the chair of the search committee for a superintendent and I scheduled meetings for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. It was a good thing I did because Wednesday you canceled due to snow, Thursday canceled due to snow, Friday we were able to have happen. And so, you know, especially in the winter months, this is also something to remember in terms of being able to meet.
True. Okay, I will go ahead and get a plan put together and reach out to the concerned parties and any letter we draft will share with you. And Jose?
Yeah, Jake, the vote is listed on the agenda. Would you, I mean, you probably, it probably sounds unanimous. Not all of us maybe have had a chance to speak. Would you like us to make a motion to approve this proposal to draft this letter? Or what would be most helpful to you? I mean, it could be that you've got enough to work with.
It would be very helpful to be able to say in the letter that the elected school committee of Mount Greylock Regional School District supports this notion. Here's why. Yes, so thank you.
Would you like to make that motion, Jose?
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay. Jose moves and I think Ursula seconded. Did I hear that right? Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, one quick point. I know in a previous letter that we sent, we have to be extremely careful about open meeting laws in terms of deliberating online, but I think there was a way that we were able to do, where we could look at a draft and we could send comments just to Jake.
I'll check on that, Steve. And I'll check on that.
Right.
I'll talk with Adam Dupre about that.
If not, we can have a five-minute Zoom meeting at some point to support having Zoom meetings.
There we go.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I. Open by an I.
Green, I.
Milla, I. Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Magia all units.
Second.
Curtis, seconds. All in favor, roll call, vote. Once we, are we doing a breakout, Joe?
I think that's probably the best way. I'll need somebody to make me a co-host.
So once we move into the breakout rooms, we will declare our aloneness. All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Dolphin, by an I.
Green, I.
Milla, I.
Milla, I.
Okay, thank you. It is 8:49 and we are moving into executive session.
Christina, I think you'll need to make Joe a host. I don't seem to be able to do that.
There you go, Joe. You're powerful. Curtis is playing music in his head. I can hear it.
That is 100% accurate. It was the Jeopardy theme.
Okay, do we have everybody back? Yes, okay, it is 9:38 and we are back in open session. Next up on the agenda is the dissolution of the Health JLMC. I would like to make a motion to dissolve the Health JLMC and any authority it had over mask requirements, returning the mask requirement decision-making responsibility to the superintendent per policy EBCFA face coverings. Julia seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constanzina, I.
Open by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda are the motions to approve MOAs with MEGIA. I would like to make a motion to approve the MOA related to nurses' compensation as presented. Curtis seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constanzina, I.
Open by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. I would like to make a motion to approve the Mount Greylock Regional School Lunch Duty MOA as presented.
A second.
Julia seconds, any discussion?
Christina, very quickly, I think it's worth taking a few seconds to note that the heart of this MOA is the teachers at Mount Greylock Regional School recognizing that doing lunch duty during a pandemic in the way that we're structured to do lunch in several different spaces was simply a task that was incredibly stressful and very wearing on their paraprofessional colleagues. And so this MOA really reflects the teacher's portion of MEGIA saying that we would like to waive certain pieces of our contract in order to help our colleagues out. And I think they're really to be thanked for that level of stepping up for their colleagues to help out. We're all very grateful to them, it's an impressive thing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constanzina, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila with thanks, I.
Thank you, that motion passes. I would like to make a motion to approve the vaccine mandate MOA as presented.
Second.
I think Ursula beat you, Ursula second.
I did.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constanzina, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, no.
Thank you, that motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda are upcoming meetings, yes, Carrie.
Christina, Jake, were you gonna say something about? Yeah.
Yes, and I'm trying to remember what I was going to say at this hour.
We're gonna just announce, yeah.
That the mask, sorry, the vaccine mandate for teachers applies to all staff.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, you almost said the whole thing for me. I apologize, but it's been a long day. Yeah, just for clarity to folks in the community and anybody that's still watching or is reading this later. The vaccination mandate is a mandate that impacts union, all the bargaining units that the union represents. Our intent, however, is that it is absolutely a condition of employment across the entire district after adoption by both the school committee and MEGIA and that it applies to everyone that is not covered by collective bargaining agreement, including the superintendent and elsewhere in the organizational chart. So, thank you and apologies for needing a 90% reminder, but thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, upcoming meetings. There is a finance subcommittee meeting February 17th at 4:00 PM. There is a finance subcommittee meeting March 3rd at 4:00 PM. And there is a finance subcommittee meeting March 10th at 4:00 PM. It must be budget season. And there is a school committee/budget hearing March 10th at 6:00 PM. That'll be a big one. Okay, I do not have any other items for discussion. So next up are agenda requests.
Yes, I have two agenda requests, I'll make them fast. For the next meeting, I would like to request that we send a very short note to the Commission of Education asking that all further correspondence in terms of directives, recommendations, mandates from his department, you know, contain references to scientific studies supporting these decisions, or if there are none, to just mention so. And then the second one is I would like to request that we restore the ability of two school committee members to add an agenda item to meetings. Thank you.
Zay has a hand up?
Yes, thank you Jake and thank you Christina. This is just a, not necessarily an agenda, well, not an agenda request item, but a following on from Stephen's agenda request that he just made for us. On the Outlook calendar events link that we provided, there were a couple of attachments that I just wanted some clarification on. One was a letter by the school committee to DESI for data. And I just wanted some clarification on how that got drafted and how that's related to, if we could get some feedback on that as it pertains to the full committee. And does that relate to this agenda request, Ida? And that's public information, right? That has been publicly released?
I believe that that letter was the policy for having things on the agenda, I believe, is that it goes to myself and/or to Christina and we place it on the agenda if we see fit to place it on the agenda. I believe that that letter was a request to go on the agenda for consideration. The inclusion of it in the response to the calendar invite, I believe, was an error with no intent to disseminate to the entire committee outside of the meeting structure.
All right, thank you Jake.
You're welcome.
Any other agenda requests? No, okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Julia makes the motion, Curtis seconds. Any discussion?
A non-debatable motion. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constanzina, I.
Elfin by an eye.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Mila, I, but I think you could call a question of quorum to stop the discussion.
9:47 PM and we are adjourned.
Christina, can you make me a co-host, please? I need to have a conversation with a member.
You are a co-host.